The Royal Commission into Defence and Veterans Suicide is now in session. Please be seated.
Good morning, Miss Riverbuddy.
Good morning, Commissioners. Commissioners, this morning we will hear from Mr Craig Sedgman. He is the Director of Bupa ADF Health Services and Bupa Medical Visa Services. I note that Bupa is represented today.
Perhaps if we could take appearances?
May it please the Commission, my name is Coleman and I appear on behalf of Bupa Health Services.
Thank you, Miss Coleman.
Thank you, Commissioners. I note that there is a tender bundle. And certain of the documents referred to in that bundle are confidential, that's displayed there. So I tender the documents in the manner in which they're described.
Is it four pages or five? That's still going. In any event, no worries. They'll be accepted on that basis into evidence and then allocated the next.
Five, five, Commissioners.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, the purpose of this session. Of the very many issues that this commission has been called to look at, obviously enough, the delivery of healthcare to serving and ex-serving members is central to your terms of reference. Now, that topic covers several issues and within that topic, two assume particular importance. The first of those two issues is the clinical performance and effectiveness of the healthcare workforce that delivers healthcare services to serving members and to veterans. The relevant issues to consider there are the fact that they need to deliver safe and high-quality care. And to do that, it depends upon the effective organisation of the health workforce. Because that health workforce is the interface between clinicians and the patients being the members. And also, there needs to be an appropriate interface between teams within organisations, because that's where opportunities for improvement, but also risks for the delivery of services lie. And a healthcare organisation needs to have strategies firmly in place to maximise those opportunities and to minimise those risks. The second issue of importance is, of course, the monitoring of the delivery of services and the assurance of continuous improvement. We have heard and as well accepted that a healthcare system should create a learning environment and it should have a comprehensive programme for continuous improvement as part of their safety and quality systems, which of course need to be integrated with governance processes. Now, it is in that context that we come to Bupa and that is because Bupa is contracted to provide healthcare services to Defence and in the case of some services to DVA as well. So I'll come to Mr Sedgman. Mr Sedgman, in December 2022, you assumed the position of the Director of ADF Health Services with Bupa, is that correct? Thank you.
Sorry, do we have to swear or affirm the witness?
Oh, we should swear the witness, I apologize. You're carried away.
Do you, Craig Sedgman, swear by Almighty God that the evidence you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'll come to ask that question again. Tell me, Mr Sedgman, is it the case that in December 2022, you assumed the position of Director of Bupa ADF Health Services?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. And prior to that, and you continue to hold, the role as Director of Bupa Medical Visa Services, is that right?
Yes, correct.
And you held that position since April 2022?
That's correct.
Thank you. Mr Sedgman, is it fair, is a fair characterisation of your role to say that you lead the relationship with government partners? And they include, of course, the Department of Veterans Affairs, Department of Defence, but then in relation to your second role, the Department of Home Affairs?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Prior to your, to those roles, from July 2019 to April 2022, did you use the Director of Operations and Continuous Improvement of ADF with Bupa?
Yes, I was.
Thank you. And then prior to that, from February 2019 to June 2019, were you the General Manager of MediBank Healthcare Solutions?
Could you repeat those dates, please?
Yes, of course. February 2019 to June 2019.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. And you started with MediBank in September 2012?
Yes, that's correct.
And you held various roles in service delivery, operations, leadership and senior management, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. And prior to those positions, did you also have a role with Ambulance Victoria as an advanced life support paramedic?
Yes, I did.
The National Trauma Research Institute as a business manager?
Yes.
And also, you have delivered services as a private practitioner as a physiotherapist, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. Mr Sedgman, are there two contracts that Bupa has, one with Defence and one with DVA?
We have a contract with Defence, but we have some survey and quote contracts with Department of Veterans Affairs. So we have three of those.
I understand, thank you. Now, as to the first of those, we can just come to that, that is the contract with Defence. Did that commence on 14 January 2019?
No, the contract with Defence started on the 1st of July 2019.
1st of July, and it has an initial term of sixteen, six years, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, and then a maximum term of 10 years, is that?
Correct.
Thank you. And then is it the case that after the expiration of the initial term, Defence has the option to renew the contract one year at a time?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you, and then that's up to the maximum term?
Yep. That process does start though before the expiry of the standard term. So as far as the contract extension piece, so it's not at the end of the term.
No, no, quite, to ensure that there's proper coverage of services presumably at the end of that period.
Yes, correct.
Thank you. Mr Sedgman, might I ask you to describe to the commission the, in broad terms, the architecture of the contract, by which I mean the party's key obligations? And the fact of whether there are any performance indicators or there's a, whether there's a performance monitoring framework under the contract?
Yep, that's correct. So the largest part is the provision of health practitioners to the Defence Force bases, to 51 Defence Force bases. We provide that, some of the senior positions ourselves. And we also subcontract out to Serco for a large proportion of it, so approximately 81% of the workforce. Plus, we use Acumen as well for rehabilitation consultants. So there are us as priming and the two subcontractors as well to deliver that on-base service. That's only part, though, of the defence workforce, is obviously uniformed contingent as well as Australian public servants. Hence, it's called the integrated contracted workforce. So we've got that. We also provide optometry, pathology, radiology, rehabilitation services off-base. We also have a nurse-on-call health hotline service, also a mental health 24-hour triage service. We provide a call centre as well to be able to organise appointments, plus a booking system as well, so that we can work and make sure that we get the bookings out for anyone who's been requested from a health centre. Likewise, we've also got a registered service provider network as well. So that would be standard clinicians that are available to, as far as specialists in an off-base context, same as body community, plus access to hospital admissions as well.
Yes, and as I understand it, Mr Sedgman, there, the contract provides for the provision of core services and optional services. And is it correct to say that among the core services, there are many detailed there, but the delivery of the primary care services? The, also the dental, physiotherapy, mental health services that you mentioned, and psychological services, and pharmacy, and occupational and rehabilitation and health administration? Is that all part of the core service?
Pharmacy isn't, pharmacies run through Defence.
I see.
But yes, I think if you repeat the rest of those, sorry?
Occupational rehabilitation?
Yes.
And then health administration?
Yes, as far as our administration to be able to organise for appointments to occur and also to pay invoices.
Right, and tell me, as to the optional services, might you describe in brief terms what they are?
I think there are optional services that are available under a survey and quote, not dissimilar to what, how we've contracted with DVA. But as far as being able to describe optional services that we're currently delivering,
Yes.
to my knowledge, there wouldn't be anything classed as that.
Presently, thank you. Now, Mr Sedgman, is it the case, you've mentioned, of course, that the Bupa contract is non-exclusive. And I'll interpolate there to say, Commissioners, that you might recall that during the evidence of Rear Admiral Sharky, and this was on day 30, she gave evidence that the majority of Garrison Health Services are procured under the Bupa Defence Contract and that that is some 95% or more by volume of services. So quite a substantial portion of the work is undertaken by Bupa. And she also, Rear Admiral Sharky also gave evidence that some services continue to be procured outside of Bupa Defence Contract and they're the niche services which are resourced within Defence. Turning to DVA, might you describe the nature of the contracting arrangements with DVA? And the services, the health services that Bupa offers to DVA?
Yes, so DVA have the ability to leverage the ADF contract for, let's say, like services that we're providing. So currently, we have three survey and quotes. So we go through a process of working with DVA on a solution, coming forward with a proposal, and then DVA can accept or not accept what's put forward by Bupa. As far as the nature of the three of those, we have one for clinical advisory services to assist with claims management. We have a second with Open Arms, which is the provision of mental health services to veterans of their families. And that, that's an overflow, so that's not exclusive that Open Arms access us. It's when they've got some areas of need or difficulties in procuring. And the second one, the third one as well, is the Transition Medical Assessment Pilot Programme as well, or TMAP, which is working, and that's in conjunction with ADF as well. So that's working with veterans to make sure that when they're transitioning into civilian life or to become a veteran, that they've, like, medical professionals that we provide in that pilot undertake medical assessments, order more tests to make the claims management process easier. And that started in April 2022. And it's had, it's a pilot programme, it's had two extensions to date.
And that pilot programme, that's designed to assist medically transitioning personnel, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Now, in relation to the, if we can just start with Open Arms for the moment, is it correct to say that there are two key services, namely the community-based mental health services and separately a contracted health practitioner workforce?
The contracted health practitioner workforce was utilised in the early stages of our survey and quote, but that ceased, so it's the community-based services that we're currently providing.
And might I ask why that ceased?
It was an overflow, or probably to try and help backfill some DVA roles and responsibilities as well. That they were, so it was in DVA offices. And so it was to a point in time when, as DVA were recruiting to roles, is my understanding.
I see. And then the community-based mental health services, they are the ongoing services that you provide from time to time?
That's correct.
That's right, and you have provided those services continually?
Since the survey and quote.
Since the servicing quote commenced. And just to confirm that date, was that 8 January 20, 18 January 2021, or thereabouts?
I don't have that detail with me, but yes, if that's what we've put in our submission, then yes.
Yes, and as to those services, what is the process for DVAs reaching out to obtain them from you?
So we have a booking service as well, so it's not dissimilar to the ADF situation, except it's more of a manual process. So we receive a request, we look at our network as well. So we've got, we've built a specific network for Open Arms, health professionals as well, because as, you know, they're not the same as what ADF is. And obviously, we've got access to families and adolescent and child under Open Arms as far as the services that are required, whereas we wouldn't have those in an ADF environment. And likewise, Defence Force bases aren't necessarily located in the same regionality or the same location as where veterans would settle. So we procure those services, we make sure that at the Open Arms practitioners that we use are understanding of veterans' health needs and we provide that service and then we pay the invoice.
Thank you, and tell me, Mr Sedgman, how do you ensure that they understand veterans' needs? Do you, are there certain programmes that they are put through or checks that are undertaken? How do you do it?
So they're provided information from, like, once they become into our network as well, they're provided information on veterans. And so that we can, and also information directly from DVA as well, so that they can make sure that they understand what the needs of a veteran is.
Yeah, thank you, and I might come to that topic in a little more detail a little later on. But prior to doing that, tell me, in order to access the services, I take it that the veteran who's seeking the service first contacts Open Arms? And it is, Open Arms is the intermediary, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Now, have there been any fluctuations or variations in the services having been provided? Or has it been pretty constant over the period of the past two years? Are you able to say?
I don't have that detail as far as has there been a build-up?
Yes.
I don't have that detail with me.
Now, clinical advisor services, could you explain, please, to the commission what this involves?
So that's the provision of Bupa staff members, so clinicians, to DVA and to assist with the claims management process. So they'll provide expert opinion on a claim at various parts of the claim process.
Thank you, and do they also engage with veterans through the claims process as well? Or are they simply, it's purely an advisory role?
It's purely an advisory role, there's no direct client contact.
And as to the clinicians that you provide to undertake that role, could you describe their suite of qualifications? Obviously, different clinicians will have different backgrounds. Do you provide psychiatrists? Do you provide physiotherapists? What sort of clinicians do you provide?
There are varied clinicians that we provide, it depends on the nature of the claim. So it could be, yeah, it's mainly doctors, but it could also be physiotherapists, it could be other allied health practitioners as well, depending upon what the requirements for the clinical advisory services are.
Yeah, so generally, general practitioners. Do you routinely provide psychiatrists or psychologists?
I wouldn't say routinely.
Are you able, do you have any information on that as to when, how often, and if you do, and in what circumstances?
I wouldn't, I don't have that detail with me, sorry.
Now, as to the transitional medical assessment, it's correct to say that your core responsibility is to provide clinical and administrative workforce to support DVA?
That's correct.
Are you able to indicate to the commission how that pilot is progressing?
Look, by feedback that we've been given, that it's decreased the claims process time. So we don't have absolute visibility of it because it's run by DVA. But given that we've just the inputs of the staff members, but by all accounts, we understand that that has been assisting from a claims management time perspective.
Yeah, so you provided regular, you're not provided regular reports on how your clinicians are performing as part of the work that they're undertaking in the pilot?
No, not to my knowledge.
Would your clinicians benefit from that sort of feedback?
Look, it would be hard to say, I don't think I could make comment on that.
Tell me, when, in your working on that pilot, are you also working with Defence or only DVA?
That particular pilot is actually run in a Defence Force base. So there is a joined-up process with that. But we're contracted with DVA.
I see. And have you received feedback from Defence in relation to clinical performance under that pilot?
No.
Has, are you aware of whether the Bupa clinicians have experienced any challenges or any issues in the performance of the work under that pilot?
I'm not aware.
And let me turn to another issue, and that is one of workforce supply. We've, you've mentioned that it's Bupa's role to provide clinicians to Defence. And it's a case that Defence determines how those clinicians are used on base.
That is correct.
So Bupa does not have any capacity to determine how to allocate clinicians in response to need, is that right?
No, that's correct. So we're requested under a workforce plan, which, you know, we could say it's like a purchase order at the 51 Defence Force bases. And we don't have visibility of the uniform contingent nor the Australian public servants who work in that area. And the health system is run by Defence.
Yes, and that's, it's essentially a labour hire model. And your subcontractors are engaged by Defence for them to manage.
Yes, on a day-to-day basis, there'd be a health centre manager who'd be a Commonwealth employee.
And as to the engagement for the delivery of services, are there frameworks or policies, procedures in place? And how information is shared between Bupa clinicians and Defence Force clinicians?
My understanding is that yes, that would be run by Defence.
And their defence frameworks, and have they been provided to you? Are you familiar with them?
Personally, I'm not, but yes, they are provided to Bupa.
I see, and do you know, and you may not have been there at the time, but nonetheless, are you aware from the records of Bupa, whether Bupa had any import in the development of any of those frameworks?
In my time, not to my knowledge.
And has Bupa provided any feedback to Defence about the way in which Bupa clinicians and Defence clinicians are engaging for the delivery of services?
I think we have regular conversations as well through various committees around policy implementation, areas where we say we can assist Defence in executing.
Yes, and tell me, are they, when you say regular, are they formal meetings that are in place designed to elicit Bupa's feedback? Or is it more ad hoc?
I wouldn't say there's formal meetings where we discuss defence policy, because again, from the position and what we do in the contract, that's outside of our swim lane. But there are certainly various forums when we're talking around clinical, like, we've got clinical forums, we've got management forums, we've got operational forums. So depending on the policy, it would depend upon where that might be discussed.
Yeah, and can you, and taking those forums, so for example, taking the clinical forum, for example, what is it that is discussed in that forum? What is the nature of the, what's a forum set up for?
There are various forums that are set up. They might be working group forums for, you know, particular areas that we're working with Defence on. Implementation from a design perspective. But as far as, you know, we have various committees in the clinical sphere, I suppose, as well, which are, you know, that are formal, which are referenced in Attachment L, which is where all of our meetings are documented as well. So as far as, again, because I'm not clinical in this contract, I wouldn't be able to name all of them, but there are certainly various forums where we do undertake those conversations.
Thank you, I might come back to that a little later. But let me understand the nature of the workforce that Bupa provides. The clinicians, they're engaged on a full-time basis, is that right?
No, that would vary, so there'd be full-time, there would be part-time, there would be casuals, there are locums, as far as that contingent workforce, to be able to meet the needs of the contract.
Thank you, now tell me, what is a flex fill basis? What is that?
So flex, we've got core services, which are the workforce plan that we talked around. Flex would be designed for, if Defence has a need for further resources on top of what the standard requirement is. So for instance, during the bushfires in 2019, Bupa were able, through a flex request, to provide services to be able to support reservists who are out helping with the community by way of example. If there's a deployment, if there's a training or an induction plan as well, then there's the ability to flex above what is requested as far as core services.
I see, so that will happen from time to time, depending upon need?
That's correct.
Yes. Now, it's no secret that there is a nationwide skillset shortage in the health industry. And in that regard, Bupa has, in a notice, in a response to a notice issued by this commission, identified some drivers of that skill shortage. And I might raise some with you and I might invite you to comment on them. Insofar as it affects Bupa's ability to deliver a workforce under the contract. The first driver that Bupa has identified is the fact that there's an Australian-wide vacancy in healthcare positions. Do you agree with that proposition?
Yes, that's correct.
And further, that there is a reduced pool of available healthcare workers that was brought about by border closures some few years ago owing to COVID.
Yep, yes, that's correct.
And that has changed the nature of the workforce, the health workforce after that period.
For the community, yes, obviously. For our particular environment, we only use Australian citizens as well who can achieve baseline clearance. But that has impacted because there are less people, so there was more opportunity.
That's right, so there are fewer health practitioners broadly in the community, they have more choice, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
And I'll come to the, let me come to the question of baseline clearance in a moment. Might I also raise this issue? And that is the flexibility that is offered in community provision of healthcare versus that in Defence. I understand that has been raised as an issue by Bupa. Can you explain that issue to the Commissioners? That there might be less flexibility in the provision of healthcare to Defence?
Sure, I think under the model in which we're contracted, there is the on-base workforce. So that requires our health practitioners to attend on-base to work the set hours that are required under the workforce plan. I think certainly, one of the things since COVID is that, you know, people are wanting choice, they're wanting a hybrid working environment, some ability to do services that are from a remote location, whether that be at home or somewhere else. You know, obviously, the appropriateness of that needs to be considered, and that's dependent upon the health practitioner and, you know, the, and Defence's position. But yes, as it stands at the moment, that's not an option that's afforded to us.
So when you said, just to be clear, when you say that's not an option that's afforded to us, it's a case that Bupa clinicians need to provide clinical services in a face-to-face environment, is that right?
In an on-base context, yes.
On-base context. And, Mr Sedgman, we've heard your quite impressive CV and the experience you've had in the delivery of healthcare over some considerable period of time. In your opinion, with that background, do you believe that if hybrid models were provided in certain contexts were appropriate? Or telehealth was provided? That that would provide a greater degree of flexibility to clinicians and would be likely to increase the availability of the workforce?
Yes, I do, I think that's what the research has shown as well in the health research that we've seen as well, and also from feedback as well from various employment surveys.
Yes, and tell me, have you advanced this issue with Defence or has Bupa?
Yes, we've had conversations with Defence regarding hybrid working arrangements and we continue to as well.
So at this stage, though, those um, uh, hybrid working has not been put in place, that's right?
Uh, n- not holistically. There might be some where we've got, depending upon the commanding officer's perspective. Um, but as far as a national um approach, no.
And can you indicate to the commission the, the, the reasons given to you why that has not been put in place nationally?
Uh, that, that it's not suitable um to Defence for, for that model to be implemented at this point in time.
I see. Um, and tell me, as to that, that, that same issue, does that arise in a DVA context in the delivery of services for open arms? Presumably not.
Uh, no, because we're not delivering on
You're not required.
Equivalent is on base.
Yes.
So we don't have that.
Yeah, so you're not required to go in, just for clarity for those who might be watching, to go into a, um, a
DVA office.
Psychological service centre, DVA office to provide services.
No, no, we're just providing access to the clinicians who would already be in that off-base context. So not dissimilar, you know, we're talking about on-base here with ADF, there's obviously the off-base context as well, where services are actually utilized in that off-base context.
Yes, thank you. Now, you mentioned a little earlier that the fact of clearances uh, and, and that being a, a barrier to the provision of a, you know, a, a more expansive workforce. Could you explain that to the commission? How, why is that an issue?
Um, well, it's another step, I suppose, to be able to, in this competitive health landscape as well, that um people need to go through. So you need to submit all of your paperwork, go through a process. Um, there have been delays um historically with AGSPR over the past um couple of years as well. So rather than the, the in-analysis phases, it's supposed to be, I think it's gazetted at twenty days for AGSPR, which is when you've submitted all of your paperwork. Um, that's really blown out to between thirty-five and forty-five days. Um, over recent years, it has pegged back now as well. Um, but if you consider that, you know, people are waiting, they're wanting to be in a job. When they're waiting for that long and there's other opportunities in the market, then that can significantly impact. And as also, you know, being an Australian citizen as well um, is another thing that impacts as well, because they're the only people that can um achieve baseline clearance.
Yes. Um, and tell me, have you raised this as an issue with Defence?
Uh, yes, we have, yeah.
And, and what response have you received from Defence in relation to that?
Defence have been sympathetic to that. It's not a ADF um issue, it's for all government sectors as well. Um, including our back office staff and even Defence's back office staff too. So it's more uh an issue that has been a concern as far as the delays for AGSPR. Um, but, you know, under the contract, where the requirement is that they are eligible for AGSPR clearance.
Yeah, thank you. Um, now, in the, in the, the answer to the notice to, to produce, the answer that Bupa has given to um, this commission, it indicated that um, it gave an example it just i- in respect of this topic, and that, that is there being a narrow pool of available healthcare workers, and you've mentioned that. And the particular example that's given relates to psychologists. Um, and the fact that they're, of course, they're provisional psychologists and they're registered psychologists. Um, and in, in, uh, Bupa has indicated there are approximately thirty-three odd thousand registered psychologists in Australia, and then there are additional six, nearly six and a half thousand provisional psychologists. Uh, is it correct to say that Bupa has proposed to Defence that those provisional psychologists be utilized in some way to assist in the provision of clinical services?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Um, are you familiar with the proposal that was made and in, in what way might they be able to relieve some of the, the clinical burden from the health, the, the health workforce?
I'm not across the detail of the proposal other than what the outcome was.
Yes. And what reason was given by Defence as to um not use provisional psychologists?
I'm not aware of what the reason was. Uh, it was that it wasn't acceptable.
I see. Um, now, another uh barrier to the provision of
Oh, actually, just, I think there was also the supervisory um capability that was required for a provisional psychologist as well, just going back into memory as well, that was in, that was an issue as well in an already um stretched working environment.
I see, thank you. Um, now there's another um barrier to the delivery of effective healthcare, and that is geographical barriers. Do you accept that around Australia there are disparities in the availability of healthcare workers?
Yes, absolutely.
And does that, those skill shortages in particular areas, did, how does that impact Bupa's ability to deliver services?
So I think, you know, I think the um, the national um workforce, or National Health Workforce Strategy as well talked around access, if we talk around psychiatry, in that there was, you know, there's three psychiatrists per one hundred thousand um, population in the remote and outer remote areas. And sixteen per one hundred thousand as well, even from a, a city base, and but nine out of ten psychiatrists are in that city base. So when we're looking at, we've got um twenty-eight um Defence Force bases that we would count as in regional areas. Um, then that is an impact even just from a psychiatry perspective. Likewise, you know, the expectation is that Defence members don't travel a great distance, you know, due to productivity as well and convenience. But unfortunately, we don't have, you know, in some of these regional remote areas as well, we don't have full access. Even the community don't have full access to the suite of specialists that were afforded in capital cities.
Yes, of course. And you've, you've called out um psychiatrists inappropriately. So, but do those comments also apply to other aspects of the health workforce?
Uh, yes, they would, yes.
Um, and I'll just mention here, commissioners, you might recall that um Lieutenant Colonel Stuart Holmes-Brown, he has given evidence that in Townsville, for example, has always been historically a very difficult um place to um achieve a full professional fill rates. And also, like, would Canberra be another area where it's been difficult to find health workforce?
Yes, that's correct.
Um, so it is widespread.
Yes, that's correct. But we do work with Defence and we've implemented telepsychiatry and telepsychology just by way of example as well from um, being able to access those. So especially in those areas of regional and remoteness as well, we look at other alternatives so that we can actually get, and again, when clinically appropriate. Um, we don't determine who's clinically appropriate, obviously, that's set by Defence. But though there are those, um, I suppose geographical constraints, from an off-base perspective we're talking, um, we do provide the option for telehealth.
Thank you. So just for, as a matter of clarity, you said, you, you said before that in relation to the services on base, they can only be delivered face-to-face.
Yes.
Um, what, what is the difference between that set of circumstances and this other set of circumstances where telehealth can be provided?
So in the primary care setting, which would be the on-base um perspective versus the secondary care.
I see.
Which would be off-base.
I see. So when, when you say referral to specialists such as psychiatrists.
That's correct. That would be secondary care from the primary care.
Yes.
The Defence Force base.
That's right. So when you, and then when you talk, um, is telehealth also available in respect of other um, secondary care services now? I accept that in some, some cases it wouldn't be appropriate. But is it only in respect of psychiatry?
Um, we've got telepsychiatry and telepsychology.
Yes.
From a mental health perspective as well. So that's improved access, especially for um those in those regional and remote areas. So it means that they can get an appointment quicker um than, than otherwise.
Thank you. Now, I might come to data in more detail a, a little later, but, but tell me, is Bupa engaged in collecting separately from what Defence might do, but collecting data on the, the use of its services regionally and, and where those um pressure points are? And is it engaged in delivering that then to Defence?
So we have, um, the, the only data that we collect is appointment-based data, so what the referral would be for. Um, and, you know, from an invoicing perspective as well, to have an understanding and from utilization. So we certainly provide that information and that form part of the, I suppose, suite of information that we used to develop the telepsychiatry and telepsychology models, to be able to look at where are the areas of need, where do we need to focus.
I, I see. But, but as to um the, a broader collection of data and analysis and looking at those areas of need, is that largely an issue for Defence?
Um, no, I mean, we don't have health outcome data.
I see.
So that's, that rests with um Defence. So we can talk around where we need supply and the access to um, to clinical services. And that's in the off-base context. We don't have that same visibility on base, because that's um, that's run by Defence i- in that regard. But yes, we can, you know, we do provide regular updates to Defence as well. We do benefits reporting in association with Defence as well to be able to look at what these initiatives are, whether it be telepsychiatry, telepsychology, even um mental health beds, as well as another one where we do benefits reporting in conjunction with Defence from what we see.
Thank you. Um, now, you mentioned that we, we, we addressed the transition pilot a little earlier. And I, I think I may have asked you whether there are any challenges in relation to that, and you said, if I state you correctly, none as, as so far as you're aware. But just in the, the context now where we're talking about um workforce shortages, might ask you to consider the question again and, and ask whether um clinical shortages of staff in the ACT have impacted in any way the delivery of services under that pilot?
Well, it, the pilots, um, we don't supply a lot of clinicians there. I think there are between four to five clinicians of various um qualifications. So I think in that regard, it hasn't impacted our ability to provide that service, because it's a very small pilot.
I see. Um, now let me go to, move to another topic. Um. Having, having regard to, to this national shortage and the impact it therefore has on Defence, on, on Bupa and its ability to provide clinicians, what sort of incentives has, has Bupa sought to incentivize the workforce in any particular way to encourage um clinicians to work for Bupa in these roles?
Um, yes.
And what has it done?
So we've worked with um, with Serco predominantly, because as I said, they hold the majority of the, um, of the workforce as well. To really work on, looking at the employee value proposition, what are the things that we can do? How can we advertise? How can we? And, you know, to the point that Serco also went out and partnered with other organizations as well to try and increase the, I suppose, the, the number of people. But, you know, there are various things that are assigned on bonuses, there are a whole suite of different um, things that we've done in conjunction. Um, and we've also going through um, you know, reviewing the, a rate card, a rate card review with Defence at the moment as well, from um how much that all their clinicians are, are paid also.
So that's a salary benchmarking process, is it? I see. And is that ongoing?
That's correct. That's, that's ongoing with Defence.
All right, thank you. Um. And then, o- other than, other than the, the, those in- incentives and the availability of um more flexible work arrangements, do you see other, other ways of being able to um i- improve the attractiveness of the um, the, the contract for clinicians so that they might be able to provide these services to serving and ex-serving members?
Look, I think there's always room to improve, so we're certainly, it's, it's not something that we've done as a set and forget. It's something we're continually working on. We have a, a team focused, an innovation hub as well between ourselves and Serco to work through what else can we do? How else can we engage? And we also engage with Defence in that regard as well.
Yes, thank you. And you, you mentioned Serco, and I believe the other organization you mentioned, um, the other subcontractors, is Advent, is that right?
Acumen.
Acumen, I apologize. Um, with, within, it's, it's one matter. Um, Bupa's reporting to Defence and how Bupa engages with Defence and it utilizes data and review of the delivery of services. Within, as between Bupa, Acumen and Serco, are you engaged in a process of reviewing the provision of services, um, ensuring that they're effective and they're properly delivered? If so, how so?
We have regular senior management meetings and there are meetings that, even if we talk around on-base as well. So each of the parties, including Bupa, Serco and Acumen, have an on-base presence as well, because, you know, we're still managing the people, um, it from an employer, employee perspective as well. We also engage with Defence at those bases as well to be able to, you know, have an understanding, how are we managing if there's any performance matters that need to be addressed, um, and how we collectively work on that together. Likewise, at the next level up as well, from an operations perspective, there are regular meetings between our various operations, sales, contracting, finance, um, as well as up to senior meetings as well between myself and, you know, people that are equivalent within Serco and Acumen also.
Yeah, thank you. And tell me, Mr Sedgman, have um those within Serco or Acumen indicated to you any particular examples where they have been challenged in the provision of services? If so, how so? Um, and what's been done about it?
We, look, we're in constant narrative as well, especially if we're talking around supply as well on
Hmm.
What else are we seeing? What else is the industry seeing? Um, we undertook a, a review with an independent, or, or Serco did in, in conjunction with Bupa as well from um, and did a very big in-depth review into the health landscape at this point in time as well to get some other independents, so just by way of example. But there's certainly, you know, that, that's what the, the purpose of the forums are is to work on how can we continue to improve in delivering of services.
Yeah, thank you. And tell me, that independent review that was undertaken, what were the, the, the key outcomes of, of that review? What, what was identified? Um, and how was it addressed?
Um, so that review's part of the benchmarking um exercise that we're doing, that we've submitted through to Defence as well. You know, it talked around many of the things that we submitted um in our formal um submissions to, um, to the commission as well, just on the changes in the health landscape, some of the, you know, comparators to other health services as well, from an attractiveness perspective. It talked around some of the broader incentives available in Queensland Health, New South Wales Health and that competitive market as well, and just the differences in the way in which um, the services or the way in which we can approach on what is that employee value proposition as well, as well as looking at what the comparative staffing, uh, or the costs associated with that. I think it's very difficult because it is such a unique environment to be able to benchmark, because there is no other um, that we're in as well. But it's really working on using industry knowledge outside of the Bupa and Serco machine, which we had input into. Um, to be able to work towards um improving.
Yes. And tell me, this initiative, is this a Bupa initiative or is it something that was required by Defence?
Uh, no, this was a Bupa and Serco initiative.
I see. Um, and, and, uh, and was then provided to Defence for, what was the engagement with Defence? Did you seek, need to seek Defence's approval to undertake this, or was it simply a matter of something?
No, we, we informed Defence that we were undertaking um this analysis as well, and we're still in conversations with Defence um regarding it.
I see. And just to be clear, the reasons why you, Bupa thought it appropriate to undertake that analysis, um, might you just state them?
It was just, again, to look at the contemporary market, I suppose, in which we're operating from a healthcare perspective. Things have moved a lot um, since the pre-COVID world, since when Bupa commenced this contract. So it was really let's get another view of where things are at, where, where do we see collectively that we can work to make it more attractive for people to be able to become part of the, this workforce.
Thank you. Um, ju- just on the, the topic of, of challenges to the provision, the provision of clinical services. Um, I wonder whether Bupa has identified any particular challenges, and might I start first with um, the, the question of I, I, IT systems and accreditations. Is that an issue for Bupa? Um, in its dealings with Defence?
Um, no, not to my understanding.
Um, so there was no issue in, in obtaining formal ICT system accreditation from Defence?
That, yeah, it wasn't through Joint Health Command Defence, but that was through another um agency within government. So there was a delay in that.
Um, and that was in the initial stages of the contract, was it?
Correct, yes.
So it's a little like the baseline clearance, but for your IT system, is that right?
Yes, it was, um, there were delays that were experienced. We did follow up um with the relevant parties um within government as well to be able to progress, but we, we operated under provisional accreditation to, in the first instance.
Um, and just to, just to be clear, when were you, did you, have you ultimate, you've received full ICT accreditation?
Um, yes.
You have. And was that in February twenty twenty-three?
Yes.
Yeah, so when, when we say there were delays in accreditation, though, it was some three and a half years, is it fair to say?
Um, yes.
Yes. Um, and what impact did that have on Bupa's ability to deliver services or Bupa's functioning?
Uh, to my knowledge, no, no impact.
No impact. Um, now some other studies and challenges to Bupa's delivery of services. I understand that there've been, as you've said, there's shortage of healthcare workers, but in Darwin in particular, have there been particular shortages in the availability of psychiatric beds? in the availability of psychiatric beds or other services for Defence members and veterans?
I think if we talk around the Darwin situation, that, yeah, that would be a community area of need for mental health resources and psychiatry, as you say.
And how has Bupa sought to address that area of need?
So Bupa worked closely with Defence to be allocated or to purchase four beds within Darwin Private Hospital as well that are available for Defence members as needed.
And how long did that take? Was that an easy process? Did it take long? How did you go about doing that?
So there was significant engagement between ourselves, Defence and also Healthscope, who run that particular hospital, to be able to ensure that that service was delivered.
I see. And how long did it take from identification of need to delivery of service? Do you know?
My recollection is approximately four months, but I would have to check.
And what ultimately was the service that was delivered to try and address the need identified?
So, yeah, it was the purchasing of four mental health beds on behalf of Defence as well. So I think, you know, that's what was the ask and that's what was delivered.
I see. And tell me, were the four beds that were purchased sufficient to address the patient need in Darwin? And have they been?
Yes, yes, four beds has been sufficient.
And they've been utilised?
Not all four, but, yeah, the beds are available for Defence Force members. And there hasn't been, to my knowledge, an instance where more than four beds have been required at one time.
Thank you. Let me turn to this topic, and that is cultural competency and expertise in Defence member need. You mentioned a little earlier on that clinicians are given, and this is in the context of DVA and their provision of services to DVA, they're given information on veterans in order to assist them, to understand need. I'd like to know, if you could indicate to the Commission please, starting first with Defence, what is the nature of the training that is given to Bupa clinicians in order to make them familiar with the particular circumstances of serving members?
So we have an agreed training plan. So if we talk on base in the first instance, so there's an agreed training plan between ourselves and Defence, which is some 29 different components. And some of those components are applicable depending on the craft group that are, that's required. Many of those are induction units as well. So they have to occur before the actual health professional starts in a non-base context. So they're required to go through, including there's a four-hour module on introductory to Defence Health. But there are a significant number of modules there. There are mental health modules also that are undertaken. And depending on the module within the training plan, depends on whether they are repeated, whether they're just an induction, whether they're annual or whether they might be a different frequency. So that's from an on-base context as well as far as getting that familiarity. I think if we talk to the off-base context, so we provide for our registered providers, our network as well, which is some 14,000 registered providers that we have nationally, we provide a welcome to Bupa pack, which includes information on working with Defence, the differences in working with Defence, if they're mental health practitioners, there's further information on mental health assessments, the, and I suppose the, you know, the relevance from a Defence perspective, which is different to community. And we also have ability to access an induction hub or a, not an induction hub, but a provider hub as well, where further information, FAQs, are also provided. So that's in an off-base context. Some of the other things that we also do in off-base contexts is we have provider events as well that we do in conjunction with Joint Health Command. So that would be at a particular base. We would invite our registered provider network and others as well. So I think, you know, an important piece there is that Defence aren't compelled or the referring clinician aren't compelled to refer to a Bupa off-base clinician. They can request anyone outside of that as well. So when I'm talking around that familiarisation, that's for those people that have agreed to our terms and conditions and to work with us in partnering, in delivering services to Defence. But so we had some really great feedback and that's actually done in an on-base context. So again, it breeds that familiarity, being able to go touch and feel as well. And we do specific modules in association with Defence to be able to deliver as well. And we found that not only that's increased that cultural competency, but it also has increased the availability of appointments that are sometimes afforded to Defence members as well through our network.
Yeah. So when you say great feedback, that's feedback from clinicians who are providing the services, is that right?
That's correct.
And is there, just so I'm clear, is that just, all of that training, does that happen just at the beginning or is it an, there's an ongoing process? And if so, what's the timeframe?
So from an on-base perspective, it depends on the training module, those 29 that I may have mentioned as well. So in our training plan, there's various frequencies for those. In an off-base context, we, you know, we have provider newsletters that we send out. So we, you know, we still continue to send information as well, depending on what the topic may be. I think, you know, there's a tension between having an exhaustive network of providers who may only see one or two Defence Force members, you know, in, over a period of time to be able to have that familiarity versus having the right-sized network that we try to work towards so that we can make sure that, you know, that our registered providers are seeing, you know, Defence members in enough frequency that they maintain that cultural competency.
Yes, because there's certainly been a criticism that we've heard on more than one occasion from clinicians and from serving members before this commission, that the loss of uniform medical officers and the loss of unit expertise and the outsourcing instead of clinical services constitutes a real loss of ability properly to treat serving members and a familiarity with the work that they undertake. How can you be assured that the modules and the training that is undertaken is sufficient properly to equip clinicians with a knowledge of Defence services?
I think there's a couple of things there. So, you know, the induction modules are one thing. When they start working in a Defence Force base on a day-to-day basis, you know, by experience, they're going to pick up, you know, what it's like to work with Defence, other thoughts, considerations. You know, they're under the guidance from a Defence policy perspective as well. So they're aware of the Defence Force Health Manual or Defence Health Manual. So that would be also the framework in which they're operating to understand the difference between a civilian health service versus a Defence health service. I think if we also consider that we have a number of reservists and also veterans who work for Bupa and Serco and Acumen as well. So, you know, by recent accounts, we've got over a quarter of our workforce as well as either acknowledged as being a reservist or a veteran. And we also have a proportion of Defence spouses as well who work at our basis too. So from a familiarity perspective, between those three groups as well, I would suggest that we do have Defence experienced people on top of the training and also being in the day-to-day operations in a health centre.
Yes. Now, on the topic of reservists, in what way are they utilised?
So they're not, they're not utilised in their reservist capacity. They'd be utilised as far as their civilian capacity as well. So they've chosen to work for Bupa or Serco or Acumen as far as being, providing their day-to-day operations. But when they have their reservist hours, that would be outside of what we're talking about.
And to the extent that there are skill shortages and if they be available, the reservists, do you think there is value in incentivising reservists in particular to provide health services to Defence?
I think if we're talking around their civilian hours, because reservist hours need to be done when they're wearing uniform. So this will be in a non-uniform capacity. So I think, you know, that would be one element that we could investigate further as well to attract more reservists in their civilian hours.
Yes, thank you. And are you in the process of doing that?
We've had discussions internally, but we, you know, I suppose it's one of the levers that we're looking at as far as, well, how do we, how do we increase the workforce?
Yes. And tell me, as to, returning to cultural competency and mentioning the modules, has Defence come to Bupa to ask a view or make inquiries, to undertake assessments as to whether your clinicians are sufficiently apprised of Defence member needs to deliver effective clinical services? Or has it been a matter for Bupa?
Look, I think, you know, we do a survey for those that are accessing services. So that's for Defence Force members. There is sometimes feedback that, you know, that could be an area where it's improved. But as far as having that as a consistent theme, that's, I don't have knowledge of that. And it hasn't been raised to me as being an area that we need to consider. Obviously, we would, you know, we're very interested in whatever we can do to increase knowledge. But as far as having it pointed out to us from Defence, that this is something that we need to work upon, to my knowledge, that hasn't been communicated.
Yes, thank you. It's been suggested to the Commission that there will be utility in adding a dedicated health and wellbeing capability in Army units, for example. And that would provide a dedicated and responsive service. In Bupa's experience and in administering, in providing clinical services, do you consider that that is something that might be useful to address need, placing a clinician in a unit?
I think we do have probably a not dissimilar process in that there generally is a senior doctor who, or a doctor that may be associated with a unit as well from a dependency perspective. I'm not, I'm not across what was presented at the Commission in that. But other than that, I'm not aware of what was presented to the Commission.
And I accept that. Have there been discussions at all with Defence at any stage about placing a Bupa clinician in units?
No. And when I say in a unit, it would be servicing a unit, not actually...
Yeah, yes, servicing a unit, that's right.
Is my understanding in that some bases do operate in that and that there is a dependent clinician, that's usually a doctor that's associated with the unit.
And is that a Bupa doctor?
It can be, I believe.
I see. Now, we've mentioned one aspect of health inequality in terms of ability to access services and regional variations. Looking at other aspects of health inequalities, has Bupa sought to, in the analysis it undertakes, to identify any at-risk groups within Defence? Number one, or does it receive information for Defence about particular at-risk populations within the cohort?
Well, we don't have access to health outcomes. So as far as having knowledge of such groups, that's not something that we have been involved in. Obviously, if we talk around more holistically access to mental healthcare and working with Defence as far as the telepsychiatry, telepsychology, then, then yes, that would be right. But again, we don't have that data to be able to necessarily identify at-risk groups.
Yeah. Do you consider, knowing the services that are offered, that Bupa would benefit were it provided with that at-risk, with that data? So it could identify particular areas of need? Then to identify a workforce to address those areas of need?
Look, I think the provision of data assists with planning and to be able to assist Defence. So, you know, I would suggest that that would be helpful as well to have a joined-up approach.
Yes. And that's presently not the case?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Thank you. Commissioners, I might, we might take the break early because I might be finished a little bit earlier than anticipated or at least than provided for on the schedule. So perhaps we can take the break now, if that's not a trouble, and then come back and finish the session, including questions?
I think it should be fine. So we'll just break 15 minutes now rather than a bit later.
Yes, that's right.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. We'll adjourn.
All rise. The Royal Commission into Defence and Veteran Suicide will now adjourn.
The Royal Commission into Defence and Veteran Suicide is now resumed. Please be seated.
Thank you, Ms Rubegoni.
Thank you, Commissioners. Mr Sedgman, prior to the break, we were discussing the training given to those clinicians who treat serving members through the Defence contract. Would you now indicate to the Commission the nature of the training that is given to those clinicians who provide services to DVA and ex-serving members?
So we provide information to those via open arms, is what I think we're talking about here.
Yes.
So we do provide other information to our providers in an open arms context as well around the specificity of working with Defence.
And what is the nature of that information?
It would be just what it means to treat. I don't have the specifics with me, but it's really around the context for working with a veteran.
Yes. Now, as to the pilot that we mentioned earlier, and just to remind ourselves, this is the transition pilot which seeks to assist medically transitioning ADF personnel to provide fit-for-purpose medical evidence to support their claims for compensation to DVA. What particular training is provided to those? I think you mentioned, was it four people? Who formed, four clinicians who form part of that pilot?
Yeah, I believe it's between four to five.
Four to five? Were they given any particular training prior to undertaking or participating in that pilot?
My understanding is that they would have.
You don't know the specifics of that?
I don't know the specifics.
Yes. And was that training then that was provided, I take it, not by Bupa?
I could, I'm not able to confirm that. My understanding is, though, that there would have been the same training, or similar training modules that would have been applied for those particular individuals, but I can't confirm.
I see. And...
They wouldn't have been the training plan that we're talking about from an ADF perspective earlier, because this is a DVA project.
Yes. The question is this, and you may not be able to answer it, based on what you've just said, but I'll put it to you and you can tell me, I'll answer it. The training, the pilot, the transition pilot is designed to facilitate a holistic and trauma-informed medical support for that claims process. And what I would like to know is whether those four to five clinicians were provided any particular trauma-informed training prior to their participation in that pilot?
I'm not aware.
And any other training particularly relevant to dealing with veterans who might be experiencing any sort of distress?
I think the demarcation there is they're not veterans at that point in time, so they're still serving members to enable that transition to them to become veterans as well. So I think they're still within the serving capability.
Yes, yes, I understand that. But any particular training to address the circumstances that they might be? They're medically discharged and they might be particularly vulnerable.
I'm not aware.
Based on your expertise in delivering services and looking at that pilot, it's a small pilot, there are only four clinicians. Do you know that, is it a full-time job for those four clinicians participating in this pilot?
No, I don't. I don't believe it is.
Do you believe that it's feasible, once the pilot's complete and based upon the pool of the workforce, to run this out as a broader programme to facilitate the transitioning of all ADF medically discharged personnel?
Look, it would be hard for me to make comment because we just provide the services.
Yes.
I think that'd be a question for DVA and Defence.
Yes. And in order for you to comment, what would you need? You'd need data from DVA and Defence on numbers?
Yeah, on numbers and how quickly did it, or how did it assist from a timeliness perspective in being able to get the claim through?
Yes, thank you. Now, as to that engagement with DVA and Defence, of course, we said earlier that it's at the interface between clinicians and patients and also within teams within an organisation that there are opportunities and risks for the delivery of care. So I want to look at those interfaces, particularly with Bupa and Defence and Bupa and DVA. Prior to Bupa's being contracted to provide these services, I think we mentioned that Medibank provided them, is that correct?
That's correct.
When Bupa took over the contract from Medicare, were there any initial challenges at the initial stages of taking that contract over that Bupa had to deal with? And if so, how were they managed?
Just to correct, it's between Medibank and Bupa. So yes, the transition piece.
Transition from Medibank to Bupa.
Medibank, yep. Look, I believe there was. I was obviously not part of the Bupa team until 1st of July 2019. But yes, there were, I suppose, the timeframe from announcement to when services commenced. You probably did, there was probably some timeliness as well to be able to contract with a new provider to be able to run efficiently that service. And I think, you know, one of those things as well is just making sure that continuity of care piece as well between Medibank and Bupa.
Yes. And are you aware of what was put in place, what structures were put in place to ensure a continuity of care, to ensure continuity of care from Medibank to Bupa?
I think from an off-base perspective, there were open episodes of care, which were those that were being treated by Medibank. And then they continued to make sure that that continuity wasn't broken for Bupa, for the member as well when it came across to Bupa.
Yes.
And likewise, from an on-base perspective, there would have been a large proportion of the on-base workforce that were employed by Medibank. And there was also two other subcontractors that would have then transitioned across to being Bupa, CERCO or Acumen employees.
Yeah, thank you. And upon Bupa's taking over of the contract, apart from that transition process, there is, is there not, a governance framework among other structures within the contract to manage the engagement between Defence and Bupa when it comes to the delivery of services? Is that right?
Yes.
And is it the case that that governance framework was renegotiated at a certain point in time?
There's a current process being undertaken at the moment to review the performance management framework.
Yes. And speaking broadly, are you able to say what some of the drivers are for needing to renegotiate that and review it?
Look, I think from a high level, I'd say there's acknowledgement that the performance management framework put in place at the start of the contract doesn't necessarily reflect the contemporary health landscape that we're under now as well.
Yes. And is it the case that some of the issues that you've identified before, including COVID, have impacted upon that landscape?
Yes.
And warranted the change?
Yes, that's correct.
Are there any other ways in which Bupa and Defence have evolved their delivery, the delivery of healthcare services to Defence members over the course of the contract?
Sorry, could you reframe that?
Just a moment, I'll just address this. Yes, I'll put it in this way. Has Defence raised with Bupa any issues at the systemic level that affect the promotion of healthcare?
I'm not quite clear.
Provision of healthcare, I should say.
So, sorry, repeat one more time.
Are there any issues at a systemic level that Defence has raised with Bupa that are challenges to the provision of healthcare?
I don't, look, I think the fill rates piece as well and the clinical workforce that we're providing is something that is regularly talked around between Bupa and Defence. Likewise, it's reported on as well. So we do quarterly reporting to identify how we're performing and the measures that we're taking to be able to address key challenges as well.
Yes, and when you say reporting, reporting to whom? Reporting to Defence?
To Defence, correct, on a quarterly basis.
Yes. And upon that reporting, how do you engage with Defence thereafter in response to those? Are there meetings? What do you do in relation to those numbers?
Yes, we have a regular series of meetings as well from the various levels within Bupa and Defence, including between our CEO as well and Chief of Personnel. And likewise, all the way down as well, where key issues would be discussed. But we have also set forums as well. We receive feedback from Defence as well on our submissions also. And then we work towards addressing any key concerns.
And tell me, how do you deal with DVA correspondingly when it comes to reporting of numbers and fill rates and the like? Is it the same?
It's, yes, it is the same. We do quarterly reporting to DVA and we have senior meetings as well with DVA also.
Now, in your position, you've had opportunity, Bupa's had opportunity to observe Defence and then also DVA's management of the delivery of healthcare services. And of course, we're accepting that the scope of those services is quite different and the circumstances in which they're delivered are a little different. Are you able to point to any lessons or opportunities for improvement that you've observed in one domain that might be relevant to the other?
Look, I think there are always opportunities to improve. So, you know, there are certain things that we could be doing more collectively as well. So we've got, you know, we could be using our referral booking system as well in an open arms context. We could also be using, we use that as part of the clinical advisory services while we use that system for workflow management. So what that means is that DVA now have the ability to see how quickly things are progressing as far as a claim goes as well. But, you know, that could also be an opportunity to use more holistically for DVA from sourcing clinicians as well from an off-base perspective. You know, I suppose that continuity piece between when they're a serving member to when they're a veteran as well is something that we could work together towards as well. Because, you know, from a geographic perspective, as I mentioned earlier as well, it may be that a serving member then moves to another location when they've completed their service. I think that's, you know, that continuity piece thing is always important too. And I think by utilising telehealth and other options as well, there is opportunity there also.
Yes, thank you. And just on the continuity of care piece that you mentioned, it does seem to me, and tell me if this characterisation, whether you agree with this characterisation, that Bupa is a little siloed, not necessarily by any fault of its own, but it's just the fact of the structure from Defence and from DVA by virtue of the extent and nature of the data that it receives. Would you agree with that proposition?
Well, yeah, we don't receive any clinical data, as I've made mention, or outcomes data. So in that regard, we don't, yeah, it's not part of what is delivered to us under the contract.
Yes. And in order, from your experience in delivering healthcare services, in order to provide a more holistic and a lifetime approach to health and wellbeing and also a approach to continuity of care in individual cases, do you consider that Bupa would be assisted by receiving more data from Defence about the nature of its members and the conditions that they have in order to design its programmes and services and to train its clinicians and provide clinicians?
I'm sorry, I objected. I think for that question to have any meaning, you would have to specify the exact types of data because the questions before it were clinical. And I'm not sure that this question is dealing with clinical data or some other form of demographic data, I'm just not sure.
I think I'll just limit it to health outcomes.
We'll clarify that by another question.
Mr Fordham, I'm sorry to be difficult, but you're right, I can't see you there. I just wonder whether you might swap seats with Miss Musgraves so we can see you? Because I can't see you. Is that, if it's feasible?
I think so, I'll take mine. I'm touched that you...
I couldn't see you, but I felt your presence. Thank you.
Yeah, so health outcome, health outcome data.
I think, you know, to look at population health improvements, you need to be able to measure the effect. So at the moment, we have input data, but we don't have outcome data. So I think, you know, we'd be very comfortable to work with Defence and DVA to assist and see what we could do in that regard.
Yes, thank you. Now, as to other aspects of working with Defence and DVA, let me ask this. Defence, of course, has a number of, it has its manual, Defence Health Manual. And Defence has certain policies and frameworks governing the provision, in a clinical governance sense, governing the provision of healthcare. And Defence and DVA are currently developing a Defence and Veteran Mental Health and Wellbeing Strategy. And there are a number of other strategies. To what extent has Bupa been involved in the development of, in the first instance, any of Defence's frameworks and strategies concerning healthcare? And secondly, DVA?
To my understanding, Bupa hasn't been engaged.
Hasn't been engaged. So in... Are you, prior to my having raised these, and having raised in the course of the Commission, was Bupa informed about these frameworks and structures? Did Bupa know about them?
Not to my knowledge.
As to... So let me put some of the strategies in particular to you. ADF Health Strategy? Is that something Bupa has known about and contributed to in some way?
I think we've known about it when it's been made public, but not been involved in its conception.
Defence Mental Health and Wellbeing Strategy?
No.
Suicide Prevention Framework?
No.
And then the Continuous Improvement Framework?
Not in the development of any policy around that, no.
So let me put this question to you. Insofar as these frameworks and policies inform Defence and DVA's provision, but Defence in particular, procurement of healthcare services, and insofar as those healthcare services are procured from Bupa, would it assist Bupa in knowing about these strategies and that sit above and operators, drivers behind the identification of services?
I object to that question, Commissioners. Mr Sedgman has just provided this Commission with evidence that he is not aware of any of these documents and frameworks as they were described by council assisting. So he's just simply not in a position to give any evidence as to whether they would be of any assistance to Bupa to see documents he's not aware of.
Yes, Ms Rubegoni, please.
Well, insofar as there are frameworks in place that govern healthcare in Defence and Bupa is a key contractor that provides healthcare.
To implement them?
Yes.
I would think it might be able to comment on their feasibility, I'll allow the question.
So sorry, if you could just repeat the question?
So would Bupa be assisted in knowing about Defence's overarching strategies to the provision of healthcare in order properly to assist serving members and then later on veterans in the provision of that healthcare? and then later on veterans in the provision of that healthcare, given that BUPA's at the coalface?
Sure. I think, you know, similar to what has just been raised, BUPA's responsible for the supply and the provision of services as well. We don't set the policy and process. But having said that, BUPA, if Defence deemed that it was appropriate, would be more than happy to be engaged.
Thank you. Yes, so does BUPA have any involvement in deployment? And if so, how? In undertaking pre or post screenings, for example, of deployed members?
Yes, if that was what was directed by Defence, then yes, under the flex services that we spoke about earlier.
And you say, if directed, has, do you know in fact whether your clinicians have?
Yes, they would have.
No further questions from us, Commissioners.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Sedgman. Can I just follow up on that question? Council was asking you around BUPA not being engaged in the development of strategies and frameworks by Defence or DVA. I guess, from my perspective, your clinicians that you're providing are part of the frontline delivering whatever services are set out under these frameworks. So it would seem to me to make some sense that they potentially would have some experiences that might help to inform the shape and form of those strategies. Would that not be an unreasonable comment?
No, I think that would be a reasonable comment. As far as whether that has occurred from a localized or a regional level, I would not have visibility. So it may occur, but from anything that I have visibility of, that's, yeah, I can't make comment.
So on the other side of that, have you ever had any feedback from the clinicians that you provide about the challenges of working within the system and what may have, what might enable them to, you know, make it easier or do it better?
Not to my level of understanding. I wouldn't say that that doesn't occur, but nothing that's been raised to my knowledge.
Could I just, out of sheer ignorance at this point in time, could you just perhaps tell me how the Mental Health 24-Hour Triage Service works?
Sure. So there's a specific phone number that Defence members would call. They are then received by a qualified nurse and we go through a decision-based clinical, a clinical decision-based platform as far as working through the various questions to come up with a disposition at the end. And whether that be, and the disposition may be call ambulance, depending on the level as well, another mental health line, or it could be contact the health facility the next day, depending upon what the disposition was.
And just in terms of the health professionals, you talked about medical practitioners and allied health. Do you employ nurses? And I'm particularly interested in mental health nurses.
Yes, we do.
And nurse practitioners?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to ask about the, you talked about the review of the rate card or sort of salary benchmarking process that's currently underway. I wanted to understand whether, and I appreciate we might need to talk in general terms here, but is the rate, say, for a particular discipline, whether it's medical or psychologist or whatever, is it the same rate that you're paying, say, a psychologist in Defence as you pay for someone who works in Open Arms? Or is there a difference between the two?
So if we're talking about on base, are we talking about, or are you talking about the specialist network? Sorry.
I'm talking about, yes, kind of on base versus the contractor that works for Open Arms in the community.
Yeah, so on base, we've got set rates that we agree with the Commonwealth. We don't provide, like, because in an off-base context, there's obviously other considerations, which is in the Open Arms piece, so that's in someone else's rooms. So, and generally, you know, they're not necessarily the same health professionals either that we're seeing because from an on-base perspective versus who we would refer, because it might be psychiatry or it might be...
If we took the same professions, a psychology versus psychology or...
I'm not aware. I think in an off-base context, I think there's always going to be other influences to what, what would be deemed appropriate to be commercially allocated for that particular profession. So it's a bit different, it's a bit different because of, obviously, you know, if you're working in an off-base context, you've got rent and other overheads and things as well as opposed to working in a Defence Force base.
Okay, thank you. And you also talked about benefits reporting. And you do that in association with Defence around, say, the telepsychiatry and the mental health beds. Can I just perhaps better understand what that actually means, the benefits reporting?
Sure. So we look at access that's occurred as well. We can, you know, we can give cost associated with that as well, obviously, from the data and the information that we have as well. We also look at, you know, utilization as well for the services too. So just by way of three examples, so it's just working through that in the information that we have. Again, we don't, we can't report on the clinical or health outcomes because we don't have that to our knowledge.
Okay. And if I can then come to the outcomes, I appreciate that you don't hold the outcomes data. But I'm wondering how, in the absence of any outcomes data, you assess the quality of the care that is being provided by your contracted providers?
So I think there'd be, you know, it's, Defence would have an understanding of that. When we're talking quality, we actually do do a survey to Defence Force members as well. So that's out on a fortnightly basis. And usually around 2,000 people receive that on a fortnightly basis if they've received clinical services in the last two weeks. So we get that information back as well. So we hear directly from the members.
Oh, is that like a satisfaction survey?
Yeah, similar to a satisfaction survey. And we also do that for Command as well, but on a quarterly basis as well. So we ask them on their opinions as well and their thoughts as well. So Command being, you know, we, they need to be managing at least one person over a certain level as well that we've determined with Defence.
So satisfaction is one thing, but it doesn't equate to quality. So how do you assess the quality of the practitioners?
Well, the mechanism we have is via the clinical, or complaints and clinical incident management process as well that we undertake with Defence too. So there'd be, if there was concerns around quality, that would be reported through to Defence. And Defence in turn would then provide that to BUPA to, either on a full noting basis, that Defence would undertake that investigation, or that they would ask BUPA to investigate and report back and come up with corrective actions.
So, yes, I was going to ask you about that. So complaints actually go directly to Defence? And then you're engaged as Defence sees necessary?
Yes, we also have the ability to lodge a complaint on our website as well. So it may be, you know, our providers or anyone can go through that process as well. But the formal structure is that it's reported through Defence, through their system first. And then Defence assess whether BUPA would investigate or whether we'd just be informed.
One of the issues around quality, for example, we've had evidence presented to the Commission previously about polypharmacy as an example. And that includes for serving members, not necessarily just in the ex-serving space. Which does speak potentially, I mean, not all polypharmacy is inappropriate. Sometimes complex medical conditions, comorbidities, you need to have more than one or two medications. But, for example, it is one of the things where you're probably not necessarily going to get a complaint, but it might be an indicator of poor quality practice. So I'm just wondering if BUPA has any way of looking at any measures around quality other than just complaints and satisfaction?
So we also, we also have a joint committee, a low-value care committee with Defence as well, where Defence identify from health outcome data as well on particular things that, you know, we should focus on collectively as well as far as, is this, you know, is there some concerns around a particular service? So if that was, you know, that could also be an opportunity as well where that type of incident would be discussed. It might be around knee arthroscopies or it could be on management of back pain, those sort of things by way of example.
And just finally, I'm assuming all of, well, your practitioners would all be registered health practitioners where registration exists. Do you have an accreditation process for them in addition to that?
Yes, we do credentialing audits, like, there's a process that occurs with that as well. Likewise, we've got APRAPI as well from an off-base perspective as well. So when we're looking at our clinicians as well to make sure that they're APRA-registered, no notations, no marks against their name as well. If it's found during the time that they do have that, then they're removed from the network, likewise from an on-base perspective also.
But do you then also, as a provider of health services, do you have a separate accreditation process, for example, against the national safety and quality health service standards? And I accept that the answer may be no because you're not the...
Yeah, I'm not sure would be the honest answer.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Douglas?
Thanks, Mr. Sedgman, for your evidence. I want to ask you about something that's been suggested to us about the delivery of health and wellbeing support at the point of need. And this is from the Army's point of view in particular. It's been suggested that ideally there should be added, perhaps to current facilities, a dedicated health and wellbeing capability brick or team to each unit to provide commanding officers with dedicated and responsive professional advice and services, which will enable commanding officers to best ensure the health and wellbeing of their people and enhance individual and collective readiness. I'll put a couple of other bits of information to you briefly, but is something like that feasible within the current BUPA contract?
Yes, it would be because if there were those types of positions required, they would be put into the workforce plan and then that would become something that BUPA would work with Defence on delivering.
Thanks. The suggestion then goes on to say health and wellbeing teams would ideally be designed in the same way as other operational capability bricks, reflecting the performance requirements of the unit. For example, an infantry battalion and the historical recovery and rehabilitation requirements. Army's experience in the development and operation of soldier recovery centres would be important in designing the organisation and operation of these teams. Again, is that feasible within your current contractual...
That type of engagement, you know, BUPA would be happy to assist with the Defence.
And finally, the suggestion is the health and wellbeing team would ideally reflect a multidisciplinary model and include medical, doctor, nurse, medic, allied health, physiotherapist, psychologist, physical training instructor, pastoral care, family engagement and support, padre, social worker, and command leadership and management, command team, data manager, administrator, trainer, integrator. The density of skills would depend upon the type of unit, its size and demography. Teams would be scalable and modular. Again, is that something BUPA could deliver?
Yes, I mean, some of those positions we have is existing position descriptions within the contract. But there are, there is the ability to, you know, develop new position descriptions for some of those that we don't currently do. So that would be something that BUPA could assist with.
For example, would family engagement and support, padres and social workers be normally what's delivered by you?
Padres and, I think it would depend, like, we would need to define what the credentialing requirements for each of those were so that we could meet the intent. But, so we're only really providing the health professionals at this point in time. We do provide health clerks and other administrative functions as well. But it's not out of the balance of possibility that we could assist in that regard.
Would one of the significant differences be the embedment or the embedding of your facilities within the unit?
I think if they're classed as in the workforce plan and they're on base, they obviously wouldn't be a deployable unit because we're only responsible for the healthcare provision when members are on the shores of Australia. But I can't see that the, you know, most units are within the 50, you know, the 51 Defence Force bases that we're currently supplying. So I, you know, I would think that if that, that would be a possibility.
So the critical issue might arise on deployment when some other medical team might need to be transplanted in?
Yes, we're not responsible under the terms of the contract at the moment from a deployment capability perspective. It's only when members are on shore.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Sedgman. I just have a couple of quick questions. You've mentioned a couple of the committees that you sit on or BUPA sits on with Defence and others to work out how things are going. But just in terms of benefits managed by BUPA or supplied to members, is there any work or analysis or material published perhaps that compares benefits that ADF members get compared to the general population? And if I can be a bit more specific, we have had some evidence about people saying, for instance, that under the BUPA plans, they get one pair of reading glasses or eyeglasses every three years, whereas in a normal health fund, you get two pairs a year. Is there any comparison done or any publication of a sort of analysis of how it compares?
No, because Defence set the policy and process that we haven't been requested to be engaged in that, in that type of analysis.
But so the sort of benefits I'm talking about, the parameters are set by Defence, not yourself?
That's correct.
I see. The other issue is, and I appreciate you get feedback regularly, obviously, from Defence and DVA at an organisational level. Is there any sort of pulsing or surveying of the community to see how on an individual or personal level, their, what's their satisfaction level? How do they feel about what they're getting from BUPA?
Yes, I referenced that before in the previous question. So we do a survey out to Defence Force members on a fortnightly basis as well to be able to...
That's on an individual level, not organisational?
Yeah, that's an individual basis. And likewise to the command of, who's the command person responsible for that member as well, might be part of that cohort. So you get both perspectives there.
Are those results published at all or?
Those results are shared with Defence, yes.
Just privately with Defence?
Yeah, as part of our quarterly status review reports, yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Coleman, are there any questions?
No questions. Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Fordham?
No, thank you.
Ms. Rubagodi, are there any matters arising? Okay, is the witness to be excused from his summons?
Yes, yes, he may.
Okay. Mr. Sedgwick, thank you for your evidence today and for the preparation you've put in. Obviously, we appreciate it, your excuse from your summons to appear today. We're obviously going to have a longer break than we had anticipated. I think we're just in the process of checking whether the next witness may be available a bit earlier. So I can't be specific for how long we'll break, but it'll be at least an hour or so. Okay, Willa Joan?
All rise. Royal Commission into Defence and Veteran Suicide will now adjourn.
The Royal Commission into Defence and Veterans Suicide is now resumed. Please be seated.
Good afternoon, Mr Singleton.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This afternoon's witness is the Secretary of the Department of Veterans Affairs, Ms Frame, who is at the witness table. She's been secretary for, I think, a little over a year, but not very long. There's no suggestion that all the issues confronting her could have been or should have been addressed in that short space of time, but it will be necessary to ask her for some updates on the project she is pursuing and her plans for the future. Might she be sworn or affirmed?
Do you, Alison Frame, swear by Almighty God that the evidence you give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Could you tell the Commissioners your full name?
Alison Jane Frame.
And are you still the Secretary of the Department of Veterans Affairs? Previous evidence we have received from the department says that the department is not in touch with about half of all, I'm sorry, Commissioners, I beg pardon, Ms Frame, I'll just ask for the tender list to be brought up. I tender the documents on the list, on the bases that are indicated by the coding system we have adopted.
Thanks, Mr Singleton, they'll be accepted on that basis and then allocated the next lot of numbers, thank you.
My apologies, Ms Frame. I'll start again for convenience, we've previously received evidence from the department to the effect that the department is not in touch with about half of all ex-serving members of the Defence Force, and we have heard the suggestion from DVA officials that these veterans can broadly be classified into three groups, those who do not need the DVA's services, those who do not know what the services might be that are available to them, and those who do not trust the DVA. Do you broadly accept that three-way classification and/or would you wish to add anything to it?
I do accept the classification. I would only add that the number, actually, I won't add anything, I'll leave it, yes, thank you.
There'll be at least another couple of questions.
Of course.
It appears that at least some veterans who have been having no engagement with the department died by suicide, you would accept, would you not, that ensuring that veterans are aware of the DVA's offerings, and indeed the offerings of others, has the potential to assist veterans and reduce suicide in that cohort?
Yes, I would.
One aspect of this would be that some veterans might become aware of and then engage with useful resources that might help them.
Yes.
And another aspect would be that just receiving occasional outreaches from the department, for example, it may be a personal invitation to attend a local commemoration event on ANZAC Day or Remembrance Day, could foster a sense of belonging and being respected?
Yes, certainly, and could also provide an opportunity to disseminate information about other services that DVA was able to provide.
Yes, and even those who don't need the department's services at the time might one day need them and benefit from knowing that they exist.
That's right.
Has the department attempted any study of how many veterans are in each of the three cohorts or categories I mentioned, don't need, don't know, don't trust?
No, not to date, that I'm aware of, certainly not while I've been the secretary. We are attempting all the time to build better, a better knowledge base and better information, intelligence about different groups. Of course, as you outlined those groups, it's easy to see that it will be very difficult to get detailed information on the number who, for example, might be in the community not aware of DVA services, like, that's obviously a challenge for us to connect with those people as well. That's why data that's provided by the Australian Bureau of Statistics and other, you know, aggregate data sets are helpful in that regard, it's not identifiable, but it does designate areas of greater density of a veteran population, for example, that would give us some cue, something to target our communication efforts around.
Even absent data or more precise data, would you accept that the DVA should take the precautionary approach and just assume that there are significant numbers out there who would benefit from hearing more about DVA offerings and would benefit from efforts to reduce distrust?
I would. I think that number will continue to reduce over time because of the increased engagement and connection with DVA whilst people are serving, so as those people move through their service time and leave the ADF, there will now, for a cohort since, at least for the last five or six years, there would be an increased connection and awareness of DVA that people leave their service life with.
Yes, I will ask some questions about that particular cohort, but for those who left even earlier than that, is the department pursuing any particular measures to try and reach out to them on a more granular level than just having a website and things like that?
Well, certainly, as you say, a website is a big part of it, because that is, you know, ubiquitous and is a go-to for even, you know, for all generations, I think, now people do contemplate a website as a first reference point. We're obviously, we obviously recognise that ex-service organisations and those organisations that provide peer and community connections are a very important part of disseminating knowledge and awareness of DVA and our support services. So we work very actively with organisations like that to provide them with information that they can share with groups and anyone they interact with, also through Services Australia outlets, Australian Government connections, through the Department of Health. So we're constantly looking at those touch points and looking to leverage that and provide specific information on veterans and their entitlements, and the support services available to them wherever we can identify those.
To the extent that that and other measures might have been taken to just increase the engagement or increase veterans' awareness of what's on offer, has there been any attempt to measure how effective those attempts have been?
Not to my knowledge at the moment, I can't think of anything specific at the moment.
And are there any specific additional programmes that the department is considering for the future to try and increase the level of engagement with those who aren't engaging at all at the moment?
Yes, certainly, I can, I'll mention two. One that's significant and will provide more intelligence, as to your earlier questions as well, about how we connect with people who are not interacting in any way with DVA, and at the minimum, provide them with information that they may wish to avail themselves of at some point in the future, is with our proposed evaluation of the Veteran Hubs, where we are actually proceeding with an evaluation on two hub sites that specifically incorporates attempts to connect with veterans and families who live in the catchment area for those hubs, who have not used the services. So the evaluation is not only focused on veterans and families who have access to services and asking them about, you know, have they found them to be quality and effective, all of those questions that you would expect, but we are also actively attempting to engage with veterans and families in the area and thinking creatively about how to connect with them to do that, to ask those veterans and families who haven't connected with the hub at all, what might be of benefit to them, if there was anything that could be provided in a hub that would be of benefit to them, or was it helpful to know about what it provided for future reference? So we're orienting an aspect of the evaluation around the recognition that we need to reach out further in the community than just the veterans and family members who are opting in and are aware. Another initiative I would mention is in Tasmania, in May, likely in May, this has been just agreed with the Tasmanian State Government, we will be asking, when anyone rings the mental health, I think it's a support line or it's a mental health line seeking assistance, through the Tasmanian State Government, that is funded under the Commonwealth Head-to-Head, Head-to-Health reforms, through the Central Intake and Referral Service. In Tasmania, that will be the first state in Australia where people ringing that line will be asked, are you a veteran? And that will enable a warm referral and a handover and a connection to Open Arms or to any other veteran services and support services, so they're just two examples of what is currently on foot, that goes to your point, but acknowledging it's still incomplete and it's still very nascent.
Without derogating it all from the quality of the second programme, the question was focused on ways of, no, I withdraw that entirely, apart from resourcing, are there any significant barriers that do or might impede the department from pursuing other engagement activities?
I don't think so, it's just those practical impediments, recognising that there are many veterans living in Australia who aren't actively seeking anything from DVA, might not even respond yes to a question about whether they are a veteran or not, and in some cases, might be not that there's any issue with that, they just don't wish to be identified in that way. So that makes it difficult to find places to connect with people who are not seeking to identify or connect with DVA services. That's where I think, so that's just a practical impediment, that is obviously, we're thinking creatively about how to, how we might improve the knowledge base that we have. I think the commemorations aspect that you mentioned earlier, which is the third outcome in DVA that we're funded for, is actually a really underappreciated element of that, where there are many veterans who, in Australia, who don't, aren't seeking a connection with DVA support services, but are involved in commemorative activities in their community, may only be on ANZAC Day or Remembrance Day, but are involved and will turn up to a commemorative service in their community, and that for DVA is a real opportunity, and that is something that we are seeking to leverage more and just make more information available.
Without, in any way suggesting resources are not a critical issue, but having acknowledged that, has the DVA identified any legislative barrier to these engagement and evaluation type programmes? I'm not suggesting that you should have, or there is one out there, but I'm just asking whether you have come up against a barrier of that kind?
I'd need to think more about any specific ones, but obviously, speaking generally, the most significant barrier would be people's consent to being contacted or information sort of them, even to ask the question about their veteran status, or to, never mind, to actively reach out on the basis of something they have ticked or indicated in a service unrelated to DVA. So that is obviously, there is a fundamental principle there about consent to being contacted and to that information being used for a different purpose.
And except for the issue you've just mentioned, and a very, very similar one of privacy, has there been any barrier to getting necessary cooperation from the Department of Defence for any of your engagement activities?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Just stepping back and taking a broader issue of the, sorry, a broader view of the issue of engagement, and just at the, what might be called the level of high policy or even principle or philosophy, what is the department's view of its proper role, if any, in proactively advancing the wellbeing of all veterans?
The department's view is that is its primary role, and that is why we exist, and so we work through all those outcomes. I just referenced Outcome Three, which is that commemorative's outcome, commemorations, but we work across compensation services and rehabilitation and other services, health services in Outcome Two, to, at all touch points, to increase veterans' awareness and willingness to engage with supports or any veteran-specific services that we can provide.
Has the department identified any measures, programmes or other things that it thinks might advance the wellbeing of veterans in a significant way, but for which it does not have necessary authority or resources?
Could you just say that one again, Mr Singleton?
I'll rephrase it, because one could hypothesise or imagine that there are things the department would want to do, it thinks they would be helpful in advancing the wellbeing of veterans on a, perhaps a larger than one-on-one scale, but it doesn't have the resources or the authority to do those things. Have you thought of any such programmes that you'd like to do?
Not immediately, I would like to do, we're continuing to work to do the things that we are legislatively charged with, to discharge those things better for veterans and with improved outcomes. I would say to your question about doing things better, where we've identified we could do more to help veterans, I think a really significant element of that is where we can work more collaboratively and in partnership with the ex-service organisation sector, and to leverage their connections, and it comes back to that same point about commemorations, that there are many connections that exist in the veteran community, of which DVA is not a part, and we don't need to be a part if the information about what we can provide is available through those networks, and that people who interact with an ex-service organisation have a clear sense of, and are given a clear sense of what DVA is able to do and what the community sector effectively can do, which in, for veterans, is the ex-service organisation sector. So I think there is a lot of additional wellbeing and support and more ubiquitous support essentially, that could be provided through a more collaborative way of working with the ex-service organisation and a really, ex-service organisation sector and a changed partnership approach, which I think we're implementing, I would consider that's what we're implementing, but we just can continue to grow that and to improve the services available to veterans through the way we strengthen that partnership and a clear delineation of where government is leading and where ex-service organisations and other partners are leading.
I don't suggest partnership's a bad thing in any way, but how would you distinguish the proper role of the department from the proper role, if any? from the proper role, if any, of ex-service organisations in advancing the wellbeing of veterans?
At the moment, that is set out under our legislation, which sets out our proper role with regard to compensation under outcome one, our proper role with regard to health services and other services in outcome two, and our role in commemoration. So the way I would express it is the way it's expressed at the moment in legislation for DVA. And that's why I mentioned earlier the partnership with the ex-service organisation sector, because I believe that there are, there is a significant extent to which government would not be best placed to provide certain types of support to veterans, peer support, for example, we do do that, obviously. We have networks of that in DVA, in Open Arms, in other services we provide. But it can't ever supplant the connection with colleagues outside of a government programme. And I think that's a really significant, a significant area there where it's not set out in our legislative remit, but it is beneficial for veterans and certainly can add to their wellbeing. There are standards around what government can fund, empirical standards, therapeutic levels of proof, scientific and medical evidence about what we can fund, because we're subject to, you know, public accountability around expenditure of any monies. And yet, we know there are programmes that are beneficial for veterans that might not meet those standards, but are indisputably good for veteran wellbeing and for psychosocial wellbeing. So I think, that's why I keep coming back to the relationship. I think there are many kinds of programmes that could be supported from the ex-service organisation sector, potentially in partnership with DVA, but where there could be a clearer delineation of what they are able to do and they have more flexibility and latitude in what they're able to support than DVA currently does under the legislation.
I think you have suggested in that answer that there are apparently beneficial therapeutic and otherwise programmes that could help veterans, but which don't have a sufficient scientific or other basis to justify government funding, is that...
What I said was that they're not, they don't meet the therapeutic test and standard under our legislation, so don't meet that scientific standard. But if you ask veterans whether they enjoy that programme and benefit from that programme, they would say they do. So I just was pointing out that distinction.
And when you refer to your legislation, are you referring to the VEA, the Merka and the Durka or some other legislation?
No, those acts.
And so insofar as there needs to be a proper legal basis for funding treatments, is that the point you're making, that these treatments don't have the proper scientific basis for funding as a form of rehabilitation or treatment under those acts?
Yes, for some, yet, you know, they're newly emerging treatments and we actually do fund many treatments in that regard. So it's not actually binary in that respect, that it's in or it's out. We do think really innovatively and support new treatments wherever we can. But my point was that generally speaking, there is a higher standard around recognition of therapeutic approaches that pertains to those programmes that DVA is able to support than what applies to a community organisation, for example.
Let's step away from claims processing and entitlements under the three acts just mentioned. Is there any legal barrier that you perceive to the DVA granting funds to ESOs so that they can run apparently beneficial programmes? We've heard quite a bit about things like equine therapy, trekking, going into the bush under the auspices of an ESO. Any difficulty with the department funding those sorts of...
No, indeed the department does that now and we also fund those organisations directly.
Does the department do that funding in effect through one-off ad hoc grants? Or is there a more systematic approach to trying to identify the best programmes and fund them?
Both, in fact. So there are one-off grants. There are also, some of those therapeutic approaches you mentioned are funded under rehabilitation plans with the department. If that is identified by the rehabilitation provider as something that is beneficial, it's funded in that way. And we're always working to build the evidence base as well around newly emerging treatments. So we're funding ketamine treatments, MDMA is in very early stages. It's approved, where we're just seeking to work with Five Eyes Partners to build an evidence base around that as well. So it's, yes, we're funding grants, we're funding through programmes for individuals and we are always also funding research and building that evidence base around different approaches.
I'll just finish this chapter with a broad invitation to comment. The former interim National Commissioner, Dr Boss, said that veterans' organisations are doing much of the heavy lifting to support veterans and families. Do you want to comment on that conclusion of hers?
I think DVA's expenditure under their administered funding would indicate that the Australian Government through DVA is also doing a lot of lifting, over $13 billion annually. So there is a lot of money being expended under the outcomes for which DVA is funded and that is, is what is, you know, what we are meant to be doing. I think their ESOs are doing a lot of, I would agree with Dr Boss about heavy lifting, but I would add that I think many aspects of that heavy lifting in terms of peer support might be best delivered through organisations on the ground as well. But that's not to assert that DVA doesn't have a potential of funding responsibility and certainly working closely in partnership. But I think to properly support the veteran community and particularly vulnerable veterans, there's heavy lifting required on both sides and I think that's what both sides are committed to doing.
How useful has the DVA found the data generated by the census question about veterans?
Useful, we have found that useful. We're still, I mean, it's relatively new for us, so we're still identifying additional uses. But even, for example, with the hubs, we have data to draw on and I mentioned this earlier, data to draw on that gives us better granularity about where veteran populations reside. And that's data that was not available to us prior to that census question and we are pleased that the ABS have indicated that question will be retained.
Would further questions usefully be added from your department's point of view?
We're still contemplating that at the moment. We have a good relationship with the ABS and would certainly take to them anything additional we thought that would be helpful, but I don't think we have a final position at this point.
Is it current practice, oh, sorry, it is, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's current practice for Defence to notify DVA of each transition of a Defence member back to civilian life, does the DVA monitor the proportion of those members who are not in touch with the DVA? That those who don't trust, don't know, don't need?
Can I just, is your question referring only to those transitioning cohort or to all veterans?
It may roughly correlate with what you said earlier about the last five years or so. But be more precise. There is, is there not, a cohort of veterans who are known to the department because Defence told you they were separating from the ADF?
It's my understanding that DVA are advised of all transitions, that we receive information on that and that where there are risk criteria identified or, for example, a medical transition, which is about 30% of transitions annually, that we then provide additional support.
So I asked some questions earlier about the level of knowledge you have about all veterans, ex-serving members, including those who may have separated many decades ago. I could be wrong, but my understanding is that the practice of notifying the Department of every veteran who's leaving, it doesn't go all the way back to cover all veterans, but will only cover a subset of all veterans. To the extent that that might be right, would you change any of the answers you've given? Is the more recent cohort of veterans, one where you do have information about how many don't trust, don't know or don't need? Or is essentially the information the same as we discussed earlier?
Can you just clarify the question for me there?
Well, I'll just be more precise and break it up. Do you know how many veterans whose discharge was notified to the department when they left do not consider that they need DVA support?
So my understanding is, we, DVA is made aware of all transitioning members. I will have to confirm whether we hold any more data about transitioning members who are not actively seeking anything, no claims in process or anything at the time they transition from service. We do have some data, we just, actually, it's quite recent data, where we surveyed transitioning members, it was done jointly with Defence, about what they were seeking at transition and what products and services met their needs at transition and thereafter, in the immediate term after. So we do have some data there, I would need to, that's very recent, so I would need to go back and look at that to provide you more information about what exactly we know in that regard.
Correct me if I'm wrong, if this is out of date, but is it still the practice, now that you are secretary, that a letter goes out to every discharging veteran to, in effect, introduce the department or remind them of the department?
Yes, that's my understanding. That letter also goes out on commencement in service as well.
After the engagements that may occur around, in the transition period, and let's just define it as the first two years after separation, are there any other regular reach-outs by the department to keep in touch with the veterans whose identity they do know?
Not that I'm aware of, not unless it was instigated by the veteran directly.
We've heard the suggestion that soon after members return to civilian life and perhaps have settled in a new area or even the same area where they were serving, someone should personally reach out to the veteran, not just by an email or a letter, but go and knock on the door or in some other way, make interactive contact to thank them for their service, to make sure they know all the different things that are available. If the DVA had the funding, would there be any barriers to making that kind of outreach?
Only the barriers I mentioned earlier about the agreement of the veteran to that contact. I would also suggest in line with what I've said earlier that if a visit like that were to occur, I would like to see that being conducted jointly with a member, a local member of the ex-service organisation that might best, you know, be in their local community or one that related to their service. I think that's where there was a warm connection there as well. If a visitation programme or some kind of outreach programme like that were contemplated, it would be good to do that in concert with the ex-service organisation sector.
We have heard from some veterans that there are too many forms to fill out, but we have also heard there are quite a lot of forms to be filled out when a member is transitioning. Has the DVA made any arrangements for an opt-in or opt-out or just straight choice about being contacted? One could imagine a transition form that says, would you like to be or would you wish to refuse direct contact from the DVA in the way I've described?
I'm not aware at the moment. I would need to take that on notice.
You see, I realise it's on the spot, but do you see any reason immediately why that shouldn't be included as part of the separation process? So that if you've got the information, you know that you can with the local ESO or other appropriate person, go and make that person or reach out a little after discharge?
I don't see any reason we couldn't do that, provided the veteran was given an opportunity to consent.
Yes. Does the DVA offer a smartphone app to assist and design for Australian veterans?
Not currently that I'm aware of. I think different kinds of apps have been tried in the past. But I'd need to confirm whether they were DVA apps or apps that we were developed in partnership. So I'm not aware of one at the moment, however.
And finally, on this little chapter, what, if anything, is being done to capitalise on commemorations work in order to enhance engagement with veterans?
As I said, we're really seeking to leverage and take advantage of that opportunity that commemorations provide to connect with a broader cross-section of the community. And we would all know from attending commemorative events that there's a much broader grouping that come along to those events than just veterans and even families that have a connection to services. Many people in the community connect at those points. So we want to make sure information about DVA is provided at those services so that people can follow up where they need to, that there's a positive view of DVA and what we're able to provide. We're changing some of our approach to overseas commemorations and next year, we'll be including a much more, a much greater proportion of community members, of ex-service organisation representatives, of veterans and family members in the party travelling overseas to deliver those services. So they would be part of the DVA organising party. And we're doing initiatives like that to try and extend the reach and awareness of DVA's service offer, as well as obviously providing a really meaningful opportunity, primarily, a meaningful opportunity for veterans, family members, interested people to engage with those services. But as you'd appreciate, even when it's a small number of people, they are people who are connected to different community networks and can disseminate messages about DVA and what we're able to do. So we're leaving no stone unturned, I would say, in trying to think creatively about those connections and how we might be able to connect more broadly with sectors of the community who otherwise wouldn't interact with DVA.
When a greater number of veterans is travelling overseas, well, you said a greater proportion, which might be a little different, but is there a reduced number of DVA staff going on those trips?
Yes, likely.
Could you please introduce us briefly to the DVA's transition branch? What it is, what it is doing, why?
That branch was created last, I think it was about the middle of last year, I created a transition branch. It actually incorporated existing functions and roles within the department. So the work was already well underway in DVA and there were very strong partnerships with Defence. However, I felt that it needed a specific and discreet branch focus in recognition of how much work we were progressing at that time and will be for some years. So created a separate branch that just continued that work then of working very closely with the head of the Joint Transition Authority in Defence. So the Assistant Secretary in that role works very closely with the head of the JTA. They are continuing to develop initiatives and reforms together and implement transition supports. The Assistant Secretary in DVA has responsibility for the 66 Veteran Support Officers who work on bases, I think it's across 55 or 56 bases. Those Veteran Support Officers, that were one of the initiatives and roles that emanated from the Special Forces pilot, they sit within that transition branch in recognition of their critical role supporting servicemen and women on base as they are preparing for transition. They spend time with them, talking through DVA's services, assisting with claims and just providing practical support where they can. And I've sat in some of those discussions where people who are still serving have that time with a DVA staff member on base to get paperwork in order, to contemplate what they will need to do and are taken through that in a one-on-one support.
Sorry, is the transition branch delivering other services? Sorry, is the Transition Branch delivering other services beyond what the VSOs are doing?
Yes, so the VSOs, as I said, they're just part of that Transition Branch. So it's a significant component, but it's just part of the branch. The branch is also working with JTA around a veteran, around transition support. So the implementation of Defence's aspects of transition support as well. Also the Veteran Employment Programme, so that is delivered through the Transition Branch and the elements of Veteran Employment that we lead in DVA. They're also auspicing some quite significant work we're leading with experts in the sector and that includes veterans by definition, about what additional we might be able to provide for transition support. So the recognition that there is something around meaning and purpose post-service that could benefit from more focus and more innovative development from government. And that branch will be leading that work going forward as well, which is consulting with experts and contemplating what else might the government do.
Are you satisfied with the DVA's opportunity to engage with the Joint Transition Authority and participate in its work?
Yes, I am.
What's your view on increasing the role of the DVA in the JTA and/or making the DVAA part of the JTA?
My view is that it's less a structural imperative, like structurally it could be designed anyway. I don't think there's any particular magical way to structure things. I think that the partnership is working well between Defence and DVA and that there's just opportunity to keep leveraging that to contemplate where DVA might be able to provide specific support and has expertise in something that is not within Defence's remit. And I think that's all under very active consideration at the moment. Can I just add another specific piece of work that's led from that Transition Branch is the Secretariat Support and indeed the agenda and the policy drivers for the Joint Transition Oversight Panel as well, which is Defence and DVA and other Australian Government agencies.
So I was, my next question was, what is the role of the Transition Oversight Panel? While you're at it, could you tell us who comprises that panel, who's on it and what its objectives are?
Yes, certainly. So, sorry, I should have mentioned it earlier in the Transition Branch because it is a key element of their work. So that panel was commenced, I was probably about March last year. It is, at the time, was jointly chaired by Deputy Secretary Greg in Defence and me as Secretary of DVA. Now it is me and Lieutenant General Fox in Defence. It is a panel that was established in recognition of the need at the most senior levels of the Australian Government to ensure that there was a connection, a veterans' connection to other Australian Government services was facilitated at the point of transition and that any barriers were actively identified and could be addressed. So the membership of the Transition Oversight Panel included then, obviously and by necessity, Services Australia. We have a Deputy Secretary on the panel, the Australian Department of Health and Age Care, CSC, I'm just thinking through the membership, they're on the Joint Transition Oversight Panel as well. I think that's the membership. Apologies if I've missed anyone out.
It's meant to be a memory test, it just gives us the flavour. Is there a way in which its achievements will be evaluated or at six?
Well, for me, the ultimate outcome is, has it made transition easier and less friction points? That's the clear objective. To further that objective, thus far, the panel has leveraged Services Australia expertise. And this is something that they are very adept at doing in undertaking a service mapping exercise. So Services Australia have done that service mapping of where a transitioning member would have touchpoints with other Australian Government departments or a need for a transition to services from other Australian Government departments. So we're currently using that service mapping to talk on the panel about where we might be able to address some of those issues. We had a discussion at a recent panel meeting, I think it was two weeks ago, on a survey. As I referred earlier to a transition survey where there had been replication. What we've done is replicated a survey from four years ago, I think it was four years ago, and replicated that with a new cohort now to not only get current data about experiences of transition services, but also to provide a comparison, obviously, to the baseline that was provided in the earlier survey. So we use intelligence like that and consider reports there that have been instigated jointly by Defence and DVA to contemplate where we might need to do more work. We talked about a veteran identifier. We are now contemplating in that panel the next steps about moving towards greater state and territory collaboration as well and how we might bring them into our consideration of wraparound support for transitioning members.
There's quite a lot in that answer. Some of it, I'd suggest to you, is a description of how efforts are being made to improve the transition experience and the mapping by Services Australia. I would suggest is in that category. But in terms of evaluation of whether these efforts are successful, you have, I suggest, only mentioned the survey. And that survey replicates one that existed before the Transition Oversight Panel and therefore, it would seem, won't be specifically focused on the success or otherwise of the panel. Is it contemplated that there'll be some kind of systematic attempt to work out whether the panel itself has been successful?
Certainly, I mean, the panel would be considering, I would need to look at its terms of reference again, which would set out its objectives. And as I said, for me, the ultimate outcome indicator is whether it's affected some changes that have made positive improvements to people's experience of transition.
Appreciate, that's the objective. And I do appreciate, because you are chairing the panel yourself with General Fox, you can see it to some degree. But just to state what the objective is, doesn't really answer the question about how you will evaluate whether the objective is being achieved. Is there in mind some way, after a year or two of operation, in which you intend a review of the panel itself to see whether the panel is driving these improvements? Because they might just happen anyway because of the JTA or the Transition Branch.
I certainly have, I could see that very easily the panel could undertake a survey of what they have contemplated and what it has led to in terms of a changed service offer or a more integrated service offer. So that would be very easily achieved. And what the panel has established is a forum at the highest level of government there to enable those conversations. So that evaluation that I just referred to, where the panel could review what difference it's made and what contribution it's made to measures that have improved that transition experience is being led for the first time by senior representatives from agencies outside of DVA. So that's why the panel was established. And any attempt to measure its success and outcomes would be based on that holistic Australian Government experience and where we could point to changes that had been affected as a result.
We have heard that the Veterans Hubs were originally funded by capital grants with no accompanying budgets for recurrent expenditure. What's the situation now on that issue?
That is the current arrangement. We're working very closely with the hubs to talk about how they move to a sustainable service offer and what other, what might be able to be co-located or what kind of, what other providers would be situated within the hub. So it's all very new and early, but we're working very actively with hub providers in that regard.
Does the Commonwealth bear the cost of physical maintenance of any building involved in the hubs?
Not that I'm aware of, but I will confirm that. My understanding is it's a capital grant, it's for leasing, but leasing of premises, but I will confirm.
Are there any, is any thought being given to the possibility of bringing in recurrent expenditure budgets to support the operations of the hubs and turn a building into a service?
At the moment, they're very new. I think it's something that certainly could be considered on an as-needs basis. And we would just work with hubs, each hub will have different experience, different providers arrayed based on the needs of the local community. So I think that would be a case-by-case scenario where we would work with the providers of the hubs and certainly be looking to work in partnership about what services could be delivered and wouldn't want to replicate services that might be provided elsewhere.
Last week, I raised with a panel of your colleagues the possibility of setting up a new agency within the DVA, but with some distinctive branding, as Open Arms has its distinctive branding, to be a one-stop point of referral advice and to carry out other engagement efforts that may seem expedient with individual veterans. Service New South Wales even got a mention in the questioning as a possible comparison. Ms Nolan told us and Ms McLaren agreed that Open Arms' distinct name and branding was an advantage for performing its functions, including in respect of overcoming distrust issues. But Ms McLaren added that the DVA shouldn't shy away from its identity and she pointed to the 1-800-veteran number. What do you consider to be the pros and the cons of setting up a new agency along the lines suggested? Perhaps to signal and to achieve a new and expanded approach to engagement?
I'm not sure immediately. For me to list some pros would suggest that it might be needed. I have a view myself that DVA is positioned to provide services and should not, you know, seek to abrogate that responsibility or create something else so that it's not seen to be DVA providing services. It's one of the oldest departments of state in the Commonwealth. I think we've got a real opportunity, as I've spoken earlier, about the connection to commemorations and other services DVA provides that I think can give us opportunities that another brand might not be able to leverage as easily. So to my mind, I would just conceive of that differently and think that the challenge is to build the trust of the veteran community. I would not suggest that it's not otherwise. However, I would note that, you know, on the Australian Public Service Indicator of Trust in Services, DVA currently scores higher than the NDIS and Services Australia. So we do have a foundation on which to build and I would just be seeking to build out on that and continue to demonstrate to the veteran community what DVA is able to do. So to me, there's all pros in remaining with DVA, presenting its array of services to the veteran community and seeking to be innovative and leverage connections to that rather than conceding that a different brand would need to be created to potentially attract more interest from veterans.
Let me acknowledge that there are fewer veterans than non-veterans in Australia and there are therefore resourcing and scale issues. But with that caveat, do you see any scope for other bodies to perform the point-of-referral type engagement services that might be useful for veterans? Maybe Veterans Hubs, maybe Services Australia Offices, or here in New South Wales, Services New South Wales?
Yes, all of the above, in fact. I think that our approach should be, in line with your questions about how do you maximise reach and that knowledge, whether it's needed or not at that particular point in time, that to me would imply that there's no wrong door and that you work really creatively with any touchpoints to ensure that there is a potential referral to DVA and that that's enlivened wherever someone might connect with a service delivery offer.
To what extent, if any, is there an arrangement in place with Services Australia to have some DVA branding in their offices or take other measures to make it clear to visitors that it provides veteran-related services?
Yes, there is a standard service offer provided through Services Australia. I can provide some more detail on that, I'm not the expert on it. But there is a standard service offer through all Services Australia outlets where they would be able to refer to DVA and to connect someone into veteran services if they identified as a veteran. There are also a small number of co-located DVA sites and Services Australia sites in Australia. But anything further, I would need to provide you more detail, but there is some connection at the moment.
I'm not quarrelling with the need to provide further detail later, but just in case you happen to know, do you know whether if one goes into the typical Services Australia office, there will be at least some actual DVA branding, a sign or something like that to let anyone know, well, veterans are served here specifically?
I don't know that, I'm sorry.
Are there any engagements with Service New South Wales or any other state bodies that have the reach, the number of shop fronts that DVA just doesn't have?
We have had discussions with Service New South Wales, so we're scoping that. That would be something that would be progressed, not only bilaterally in discussions with Service New South Wales, but ultimately through the Minister and the Veterans Ministers Council because all jurisdictions have similar type shop fronts. And DVA would want to ensure that any expansion of service or connection was universal and was consistent across the country. So we are looking at that with Service New South Wales and all states are very interested, I would say, from the Veterans Ministers Council discussions. All states are interested in contemplating how their own shop fronts might be able to provide that connection for veterans.
And finally, on this, or penultimately on this little topic, has any thought been given to engaging with local governments, which have an office, many offices across the country, for them to be a point of contact between veterans and DVA?
Not that I'm aware of, but that could have occurred and I'm not aware.
And ultimately, on this topic, are there any other issues that you would wish to mention to the Commissioners about shop front engagement?
Other than just to reiterate our principle underlying any approaches there would be to ensure that there's no wrong door and to increase the connection to DVA services for someone who might not be actively contemplating that, but could benefit from that, we would obviously be looking to work collaboratively with any shop front there to enable that connection.
There are thousands of ESOs. Do you agree that that effect adds to the complexity that can affect the lives of veterans?
I would.
And the DVA says it's uniquely placed to assist veterans to navigate that complexity. What are the main things it's doing to achieve that navigation assistance?
At the moment, we have some really significant ESOs, obviously, on the Ex-Service Organisation Roundtable. And we use that roundtable to provide, we provide a communique and consistent communication about DVA initiatives and what's under active consideration, what we're contemplating. We use the dissemination of the communique from ESOT to share information more broadly than DVA might otherwise be able to realise itself. I think one of the most significant areas where DVA can provide is uniquely placed at the moment with regard to the ex-service organisation sector is funding, something we've undertaken to do and I announced at the last Ex-Service Organisation Roundtable, that we are funding a business case into a peak body.
We'll come back to the business case, but in terms of helping individual veterans navigate the complexity of the ESO universe, is the department doing anything to help? is the department doing anything to help the veteran directly as distinct from going through the ESO bodies themselves?
The departmental staff would, locally would certainly be aware of what programmes might exist, what support might exist and would refer. And I'm sure there's very active communication between ex-service organisations and DVA in different parts of the country and that would depend on who's there. As we've said, there's many organisations, thousands, and there would be different ones prominent in different areas. The deputy commissioners in each state convene a roundtable as well of ex-service organisations in each state. So they would have that more local connection. But I would acknowledge, in regard to your question, that's at a more system level than at the individual level when an individual veteran seeking to navigate that system might contact DVA. We would certainly share whatever we knew about ex-service organisations and their, which one might be best placed to assist them, but.
Are there particular staff in DVA who are trained up with that information? Perhaps with the manual of the ESOs by category and location and maybe other factors?
Not that I'm aware of, because it, it shifts so frequently as well.
Yes, it might have to be computerised, but yes, I withdraw that. You mentioned the ESORT, let me go to a bigger concept. The National Consultation Framework comprises ESORT and four other forums through which the DVA and the two commissions communicate with veterans. Is that framework, how important is that framework for getting input into your work from the ESOs?
It's, it's really important. It includes the Younger Veterans Forum, female veterans, family, families. It, it's a very important framework. It's subject to review later this year because we want to make sure that it is the best it can be, like that it's reaching as many veteran and family groups as it can. And I think there's a recognition that it's, that it could be strengthened. We could be expanding our reach. So whilst the, the groups that we work with at the moment are critically important to our consultation, we are also expanding the scope of engagement as well. And I, I'm aware Ms McLaren spoke about that, but we're not limiting ourselves to just engagement with that group, with, oh, sorry, those groups that are on the NCF, but continuing to add to the engagements directly that we're offering with, with different veteran groups, with anyone, in fact, with deputy secretary led consultation sessions. We're going to have six this year where any veteran might want to attend or family member and raise issues and interact directly with DVA. So it's a foundational piece, but there is a lot of engagement that occurs around that and that will continue to expand.
The last triennial review of the National Consultation Framework was the 2019-2020 review and it included a survey that include, indicated that the NCF is quite no longer fit for purpose and requires refreshment and that the NCF was quote, no longer effective in representing the majority of the ex-service community. Has the framework been amended as a result of that review?
As I said earlier, it's, it's currently being reviewed again.
Yes, I'm actually asking about the last review, which was the 2019-2020 review. Has it been amended as a result, has the framework been amended arising out of that review?
I couldn't speak to any changes that might have been made prior to my commencing in January 2023. Since that time, the change that I'm aware of is the splitting of the Female and Family Veterans Forum into two entirely separate forums under the NCF. So that is one change that's occurred in the last year. I, I'm not aware, there, there may be changes occurred subsequent to the review you just referred to, but I, I'm not aware of them.
The information given to us by the department is that there has been no amendment arising from the review of several years ago, even though it indicated the two things I quoted. I, I'm not putting this at the individual level and I specifically acknowledge again, in your first year as secretary, there's been a lot of pressing priorities. But objectively, at a systems level, you would acknowledge, wouldn't you, that it's not satisfactory that a key framework seen as ineffective and not fit for purpose has been in that condition for, for four years or more?
I would, I think we've invested a lot in the last year to expand the consultations that augment the framework. So I suppose I'm suggesting that the framework is not the only structure and mechanism for engagement with veterans and families. And as I said, there was that change last year, but I couldn't speak to why no further changes were made in the years prior to that.
And I, I did listen to your answer, but just in case, do you know why no report of the review was ever prepared, even though the DVA told us in December 2021 that it was anticipated that it would be prepared?
I don't, I'm sorry.
Do you consider that a peak body of ESOs could benefit veterans?
I do.
And what about the work of the department? Could it help the department discharge its functions?
I do, yes, I do.
You've mentioned, and I promise to come back to it, as I understand it, the department has agreed to fund a consultant, a consultant to prepare a so-called business case for establishing a peak body. Work was expected to begin in March 2024. Has the consultant been retained?
It's very close, but I understand the procurement arrangements are not finalised at this point in time. There's, there's been a, a delay tied to illness in, in the person, not, not in DVA, but in the person we're working with, so it just hasn't been locked down.
Do you have an understanding, however broad, as to when the work will be completed? That is, the business case actually produced?
Given we haven't finalised the procurement at this stage, I, I can't, I can't say definitively the timeframe, but I would certainly like it to be within the next four to five months.
And do you have any views at this stage on how a peak body should be constituted and what its role should be?
In, in instigating the business case, we're really wanting the ex-service organisation sector themselves to lead a lot of that input. And DVA in funding the business case has asked the people doing that to engage in really extensive consultation, to glean from ex-service organisations what are their preferences, what they think would work best. I, I think there needs to be a really significant discussion around how we might mitigate risks and ensure that there's maximum inclusion in any, any peak body and how its governance structures can enable that. So that's what we've charged the consultants to do. Those terms of reference are not finalised yet, but I'd be happy to share them with the commission when they are. But was, was there anything further in your question there that I've missed?
Wanted to give an opportunity to comment. I'll move on to another topic and I'll ask the operator to display the aide memoir that's been prepared for this session. What you'll see, thank you, operator, you'll see we have reproduced Recommendation 17.1 from the Productivity Commission Report, A Better Way to Support Veterans, and also two extracts from a response to a statutory notice that the department gave to us. Just assuming that the information in the department's response document is true, do you consider that the recommendation there displayed has been implemented?
I do. I, again, I would note, I, I wasn't there in the department in the role at the time that it was prepared. But since I have been in the role, I was aware of another NTG that we've provided, more information provided to the commission that was a lot more comprehensive than the information with this one specifically, that I think provided a lot of evidence and, and foundation to the designation as implemented of this recommendation. There is, there were very specific questions asked in this, in this specific NTG that yielded a very specific answer that I think missed out a lot of context and a lot of other information that is, is an important part of how the Commonwealth, in fact, considered it had met its obligations and, and implemented the recommendation.
Well, it's very specific because the question asked in the notice and effectively echoed in the answer used the same words as the recommendation. Isn't that right? That's why it's so specific, isn't it?
That's true, that's true, but outside of that, DVA has many interactions with those organisations.
I'm not going to dispute that there are other interactions, but the recommendation was specific that the DVA should develop relationships with and advertise its services through mainstream mental health services such as the three named. And the evidence from the DVA is that it has not developed such relationships and it has not been advertising its services in the way described. That is correct, isn't it?
I don't consider that is actually an accurate representation of DVA's engagement with not even just those organisations, but the mental health sector in promoting open arms services and other DVA mental health services.
So assuming for, I accept that you've just told us that you don't accept. Well, let me make it clear, are you saying that the DVA response to the notice, as extracted in the bottom two boxes, is not accurate?
I'm saying it's very constrained to a, a very specific question.
Yes, but it's accurate, isn't it? It might be a narrow proposition, but it's an accurate proposition, isn't it?
Well, we actually do have an arrangement with Black Dog Institute.
All right, so it's wrong, you're saying that the information is wrong because it says DVA does not have arrangements with the Black Dog Institute, or for that matter, any other institute, to publicise DVA's services. Is that right or wrong?
I think very standing relationship.
Very loathe to interrupt my learned friend's question, but I think as a matter of fairness, if it's going to be put in those terms, he should direct the witness to the full response, including paragraph 2.2, which immediately follows from 2.1 and, and is important context. So I'd object to the question the way it was put in that way on the basis it's not, not a fair characterisation of the response.
Yes, Mr Singleton?
If it can be brought up, I have no objection to that being done and I'll ask those assisting to see whether it can be done.
You say it.
Nevertheless, I, I don't concede the point made in the objection. The wording of the DVA's response, it, it might, is either right or it's wrong. There may be context that it's a different policy or substantive angle on it. That's a separate question, which my friend is entitled to clarify if he wishes when he's called upon, but.
2.2 was up now.
I am entitled to read out a sentence from the DVA and ask the witness whether it's correct.
And she's told you that it isn't, in effect, or not complete?
Well, I think in effect, but I just want to, I.
She said it wasn't complete.
It wasn't complete.
Does this debate take us all that far?
Well, yes, in, in my submission, it does take us somewhere and obviously there are further questions to be asked once we've nailed this down. But in my submission, if the information in the two paragraphs is, that, that were previously displayed is accurate, then it indicates the recommendation hasn't been implemented. But as it happens, we've got 2.2 on the screen and I thank those who successfully found it. Ms Frame, you've got the benefit of 2.2. With the benefit of 2.2 being displayed, I now go back to the question based on 2.1. Does the DVA have standing relationships with the three organisations or any other such mental health organisation for the benefit of veterans and their families? You say it does or doesn't?
It depends on how you define relationships because what I am contending and what the NTG that is cross-referred there sets out very clearly is the extent of interaction with those organisations and many, many others, which is hugely extensive. So it's, it's, there are frequent interactions with those organisations. And whether that is manifest in a, what's categorised as a standing relationship or an arrangement is, you know, a definitional issue. And I, I consider that the DVA staff here have responded very literally and those, the, the earlier responses didn't sufficiently recognise that context of very healthy and frequent interactions with, with those other mental health organisations, not just the ones listed, but others. And the NTG specifically referred to here does do that and, and sets that all out very clearly. So it's just, it's not a matter of right or wrong to my mind. It's, it's the way the, the term standing relationship was interpreted and it was answered in a very specific way that belied a whole raft of interactions which are then referred to, however, in the next, in the cross-reference to the NTG.
Right, operator, if we could go back to the aide memoir. And I now, we were focused just a moment ago on 2.1, but let's focus on 1.1. Does the DVA have arrangements with Beyond Blue, Lifeline, the Black Dog Institute or any other mental health organisation to publicise DVA's services?
So again, Mr Singleton, I'd come back to the way DVA has interpreted arrangements. And the reality is, we have frequent interactions with those groups. There has been, that has increased over the last few years. You would note we're involved in many conferences, forums, very regular communications with those groups. You would note wherever veterans' mental health issues are mentioned in the media, there is a reference to Open Arms, to Beyond Blue, to Lifeline. These things have all been developed over time and are the, are evidence of the very strong relationships and connections that exist between these organisations. But whether that constitutes an arrangement that, you know, for a public servant, that might be interpreted as, is there an MOU? Is there a funding agreement? And there has been actually with Beyond Blue and Black Dog in the past and there's a current one with Black Dog around Coordinated Veterans Care. But they have interpreted the question very literally. And however, as I pointed out, they do go on to provide a context of a plethora of arrangements or, or communications and, and information exchange with those mental health organisations that go directly to the recommendation.
Are those arrangements about publicising the DVA services?
Some of them would be, I'm sure.
And... In your view then, on a, is this right? On a narrow interpretation of the word in range, arrangements, there are no such arrangements, but on a wide view, there are?
There are, yet there is frequent information exchange and cooperation.
It certainly doesn't extend to having DVA services mentioned on the websites of any of these organisations, correct?
I'm not aware.
If we go back to the green bit, reading that as best you can interpret it according to what was intended by the people who wrote it, do you believe that the DVA has relationships with and advertising arrangements regarding its services with those organisations?
I do believe that we have, we have implemented that recommendation. That does not mean that I think, that I consider there's not scope for improvement and to continue to build on that. But has the recommendation been implemented in the way that it's set out there? I would contend that it has and also that that is evidenced by the uptake, not only the relationships with those providers, but the usage of open arms and counselling through the white card has increased over that same period of time.
To the extent that it might be suggested in elsewhere, because I'm going to move on in a minute, but to the extent it might be suggested that this has been implemented because the DVA was already doing what was in, sorry, was already doing things to meet the underlying intent and didn't actually introduce anything new to implement this recommendation, would you then consider that the recommendation had been implemented?
I, I wouldn't agree with the premise that there hasn't been anything new occur as a result of the recommendation.
What new was introduced as a result of this recommendation in the period between its making in 2019 and two years later, 2021?
I would need to, obviously, I wasn't there at the time, so I would need to look back over some records and, and confirm that. I would certainly have regard to the NTG that's referred to on the next page at 2.2, I think, but I'm happy to come back with some more information about that.
Yeah, well, that's, you did say that...
I think we've gone enough on this line.
But with your indulgence, one more question.
Okay.
You did just say that there were things that were implemented, what, and you want to check. But what did you have in mind in telling us that things were done to implement this?
Just that I'm aware that things have, lists have been prepared, that infant, that information exists in DVA.
In many contexts, and that can go, thank you, operator. Internal audit programmes relying on the briefs from departmental officers as to what's going on are appropriate measures for a secretary to know whether things are being done as intended. Would you agree?
Are you, is this still in reference to...
No, I've asked for that. This is not to do with this recommendation, but a broader issue that might encompass this kind of thing. But let me just make, make it a simpler question. For most purposes, for a secretary to know what's going on in her department, she has to rely on the briefings she gets from the staff. Do you agree?
To a significant extent. I, I don't agree entirely because I don't just do that. I also engage extensively outside of the department. So I meet directly with staff, but also I rely on the verdict and input of veterans and ex-service organisations and other stakeholders about, you know, and, and seek their advice on how things are going and their own input to me. So, it's not exclusive, no.
No, and as I mentioned in my more convoluted question, another mechanism available to you are things like internal audit programmes, which do that kind of checking on your behalf.
Yes.
And the things that you've mentioned and, including the internal audit programmes, are a reflection of things that are ordinarily done and pretty much standard fare for most departments. Would you agree?
Yes, I would, I think. I don't know of any department that wouldn't have an internal audit programme.
And, and you wouldn't know any secretary who never listens to anyone other than the staff?
Sorry, can you repeat that one?
And it would be unusual for a secretary not to listen to anybody except his or her own staff?
Yes, I agree.
And there may be some other methods that are routinely adopted. But what I want to suggest to you is that when grappling with an issue as serious as abnormally high rates of suicide in a stakeholder cohort, ordinary measures of keeping on top of what's going on may not be considered sufficient because you need an even higher level of assurance about what's really going on. Do you agree with that?
Yes, I would, on, on the basis of risk and impact, yes.
Are you willing to give an assurance that if a decision is made expressly or tacitly not to implement a Royal Commission recommendation in the terms in which it is made, even if some other measure might pursue the perceived intent of the recommendation, then the DVA will not be a party to any public statement saying that it has been implemented?
Sorry, can you just repeat that?
Are you willing to promise that the DVA will not say that an implementation has been implemented unless it has been implemented in the very terms recommended?
It's hard to answer that question without reference to the previous discussion we've had where I, I think I considered that we had implemented the recommendation. So, I, I think what I'm saying is there's still a degree of interpretation there. I, I think that, I, I can definitely affirm that I would be seeking to implement what the government directs we implement and as, where it's clearly delineated and set out, you would be seeking to implement that way and it's in the spirit of the recommendation. If something wasn't set out, you would know what the intention was. But I just don't think it would always be as, as black and white and as clear as you've set out in your proposition there.
So, just to adapt the proposition a little bit, will you promise to implement the recommendation in the terms it is made as you understand them to be? So, there may be interpretation, but as you conscientiously interpret their meaning, will you promise not to say it's been implemented unless it has been?
Certainly, that's, that's part of my undertaking as a public servant. And if, if something is directed by government, then yes.
Do you agree that merely to implement a measure that pursues the perceived intent but doesn't pursue the actual action recommended would not amount to implementation?
I'm, I'm very reluctant to interrupt, but this is a, my submission, a very difficult question to answer in the hypothetical sense. It would entirely depend in my submission on the context and it's quite unfair for the witness to be asked a question in such broad hypothetical terms.
Mr Singleton?
We have heard from a number of sources in the government, by which I include the bureaucracy, not the elected government specifically, that a recommendation will be considered implemented if its intent has been implemented, even if the specific recommended action was not implemented. That's the opinion of some. I'm asking whether this witness agrees with that analysis.
I think you're asking her to promise not to do something...
That was a previous question.
Not in effect a precise implementation of the recommendation. Did I misunderstand you?
I, I did ask for a promise in an earlier question and it was given once I...
It's all very hypothetical though and she's a public servant who has to operate on instructions from the government of the day. I'm, I'm sure how far it takes us in the overall scheme of things.
One of the issues which goes to the trust of veterans, which is an important issue, is whether relevant government agencies are being candid with them and the public and whether there is sufficient accountability for actions and inactions. A significant part of accountability is to identify a requirement to be done and measure against what is actually been done and what has been said about whether it has been done. What we have encountered on more than one occasion, but not from this witness, is people claiming that implementations have been implemented when what they mean, and on questioning say they mean, is that the intent was implemented even though in terms it was not implemented. In my submission, the public and you, more importantly in a legal sense, are entitled to know whether the witnesses have the view that merely implementing the intent does satisfy the requirement to implement an actual recommendation?
I think your opponent might say it depends on the facts and this is all very hypothetical.
Whether or not someone has or hasn't implemented...
I'm not inclined to allow the discussion to go any further.
May I please?
It's just so hypothetical that, you know, one can imagine many questions of this nature where the answer will be one way or the other depending on the facts.
May I, I'll, I'll put to you what I would then wish to put in the alternative to this effect. The, the, the DVA has told us in writing that the responsibility, I'm paraphrasing now, but the responsibility of an agency is to implement the intent of a recommendation. May I put that to her as, for, for her comment as to whether she agrees?
Yes, I'll allow that question.
The DVA has told us that when a, when a government decides that an implement, sorry, a recommendation is to be implemented, the duty of the agency is to implement the intent of the recommendation, full stop in effect. Do you agree with that analysis?
Again, as I said earlier, it is not open to public servants to form their own interpretation of how something should be implemented and whether that, whether their view of implementation adequate or not constitutes the intent of the government in accepting a recommendation and directing its implementation. So, I don't consider that that's open to public servants to form that view, but rather it's, the government direction and government determine whether they consider an alternative way, this is in the scenario you've set out to me, whether the government considers that an alternative way to implement a recommendation is acceptable. But that rather that's not anything that a public servant can determine without the express permission and authority of a government.
Assume the government just said, we adopt or accept the recommendation. Our decision is that it shall be implemented. It follows from what you said, does it not? That the duty of the public servants is to implement the recommendation as written, not merely to implement the perceived intent. Do you agree with that?
There's, there's an enormous amount of context in that as well. It could be that there are discussions with, and this is all hypothetical, that it could be discussions with a minister or any, the relevant minister to say this, we don't consider this can be done this way. It, it might hear some other options to realise the same objective. So, I, I can't answer definitively because there would be any number of scenarios in which government authority would need to be sought for any variation for an implementation, from the way an implementation, sorry, a recommendation is implemented.
Moving to something different, whole books of legislation and much more than that have been written about veterans' entitlements and there are many details and complexities, as you know. But would you accept that a great deal of the veterans' entitlement system is covered by the simple proposition that the DVA arranges the compensation and rehabilitation and medical treatment that is due to those who have been injured in connection with their service in the ADF?
Yes.
The situation arguably differs from many other employment and quasi-employment contexts in that the DVA is remedying issues arising in work done for another employer, correct?
Sorry, can you just repeat that one?
The situation is different from many, many other employment or quasi-employment contexts because the DVA is remedying the damage done by a different employer. Do you agree?
In the sense that it's injury from service, from active service in the defence?
No, no doubt if your own staff get injured on the job, you have to, through your insurance and work cover arrangements, meet or provide a remedy and you, you keep insurance, I presume. Is that right?
For DVA staff?
Yes.
Yes.
You don't expect another department to take out insurance or in any other way remedy the injuries that your staff get?
The, the arrangement with Defence and DVA is a longstanding one, obviously, where that, that has existed. I, I would contend that military service is unique and acknowledged to be that way and the compensation arrangements that emanate from military service are similarly unique in terms of the, the role of DVA in administering those arrangements on behalf of the Australian Government.
It follows from that unique arrangement, does it not? That at least at a high level of generality, Defence owes it to the DVA and even more to veterans, to be as cooperative and helpful to DVA as it can be. Do you agree?
I do.
And how satisfied are you with the cooperation and support you get from Defence?
I'm satisfied that there is full cooperation extended from Defence.
Do you consider there to be merit in the approach of trying to enhance veteran wellbeing and reduce suicide and suicidality by taking a whole of life approach?
I, I do and I think that's what we've been actively doing with the Department of Defence first. It predates my tenure as secretary, but we've continued to, to build on that. We're doing joint mental health strategy, joint family strategy. So, I, I think they are manifestations of that approach.
And that would militate in favour of more rather than less cooperation with Defence, between Defence and, and DVA, correct?
Uh, yes.
Have you begun planning for the implementation of the Royal Commission's recommendations insofar as they might be accepted?
Have I been what, sorry?
Planning, getting ready to implement recommendations that the government might accept?
I think DVA's had that posture since the Royal Commission was instigated, in fact, that there had a team established within the department and, and looking always to the implementation of recommendations and obviously preparation of a lot of material for the Commission. But yes, that would continue for some time.
And I'm, I'm not looking for detail here particularly because you don't know what the recommendations will be and you don't know which ones the government might accept. But from an administrative getting ready standpoint, what plans have been developed to be ready to implement whatever the government might decide?
So, we have a, a task force in DVA, a small task force. Obviously have legal professionals who are, who are working very directly on all our notices to give and produce, but also a task force at a policy level that's convening input and considerations across the department. So, that will continue and our intention is for that task force to continue. But I would also add that because the Commission's been in place for a few years now, I think the department is, its default position has become a contemplation of the Royal Commission and what it might recommend and how we might consider that and apply that in, in all the work of the department in terms of ensuring that any recommendations land in a department that's, that's already cognisant of, of what direction recommendations might be heading and that we're well positioned, better positioned rather, to implement them.
Has the DVA had discussions with Defence in respect of possibly working together to implement some recommendations? to implement some recommendations that might need cooperation?
Yes, certainly.
How have those discussions been going?
I can't speak for my direct reports. But I know those conversations have occurred, and certainly I met with the Secretary of Defence last week, and we talked about continuing to work together to support the work of the Commission.
Have any obstacles to cooperation been detected?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, Defence is a big organisation, but I haven't... So there's practical considerations sometimes in implementing things, but I haven't encountered any cultural resistance or opposition.
And what is your level of confidence that the DVA will receive a supportive cooperative approach from Defence in future in respect of implementing recommendations from the Royal Commission if the government accepts any?
My expectation is that we would have that supportive cooperative approach. That's what I've experienced to date.
Can I ask the operator to display DEF 13210514? What I anticipate will come up is a brief within the Defence Department on options for managing the project of implementing the Royal Commission recommendations if accepted. If we could go down to page two, please, operator. And Ms Frame, you'll see here that there are two broad options. The first was that Defence's groups and services undertake their own projects, albeit with some central coordination, and you will see that this was not recommended. And then if we expand the bottom half of the page, you will see Option 2 comprised several sub-variants, including, more importantly for present purposes, at 2B, an inter-agency level approach that would include working with the DVA and the Commonwealth Superannuation Corporation, and at 2C, an approach based on the Afghanistan Inquiry Response. And you'll see that 2B and 2C were respectively recommended for further analysis and further development. And just for completeness over the page, there was an Option 2D that wasn't recommended. I'll just ask the operator to go back to page 1 and expand the... There's a box at the bottom. If we could just expand that bottom third of the page with the box and the surrounding writing, including, yes, thank you, operator. Ms Frame, you'll see here that the Associate Secretary was happy to explore the Option 2 sub-variants, but relevantly for you, he added that intuitively he did not wish to support DVA at all. Does this affect the level of confidence you have in getting support from the Defence Department to implement recommendations that may come?
Sorry, I was just...
Please read it.
...some time to read the text. I haven't seen it before until today.
You may find that, and it's a matter for you to make your own judgement, but the handwriting is replicated in the brownish type text.
Oh, yes, thank you. That is helpful. Thank you. So your question was?
Does this affect your confidence in the support you're going to get?
No, it doesn't. Reading that, as I said, I haven't seen it before, but reading that as a public servant, I am assuming that that language could directly mean budget support from Defence to DVA. That would be the most likely explanation for me that Defence, and assuming it's Associate Secretary Unopolis there, would, oh, it is, yep, would be suggesting that he didn't want to fund something from Defence for which DVA should be funding themselves or seeking funding themselves. So that's how I would interpret that. And as I've said, I haven't experienced anything concerning about Defence's willingness to cooperate with DVA.
And I'm not challenging that evidence or your earlier evidence in that regard, but does it not give you any pause for, or cause for even a small bit of concern that he would make a note to the effect that intuitively he would not wish to support your department? Even if it's confined to finance, which is not unimportant?
No, it doesn't, because I do interpret it in that way and that I would expect to see that statement from any public servant about budget support for another department from, you know, the finances of another department. That's, to me, just a principle of the Westminster system that we operate within where each department considers its resources to further the implementation and objectives of its minister and its outcomes under the budget. So I am interpreting the statement in that way. That doesn't give me cause for concern.
Thank you, operator. That can go. This Royal Commission's second recommendation in its interim report called for the elimination of the backlog from the 31st of March this year. There was an announcement on your website last night. Can you give us an update on that? And if you can't, let me know and I'll tell you, but you may wish to announce what was put on the website last night.
I had some briefing on the numbers that went on the website last night, but it may be best if you wanted to take me to the ones you specifically wanted to discuss.
Well, your website says the backlog has been cleared as of the 29th of February. Is that the, that's what it says? Is that the position?
Yes, that is the allocation, the claims allocation backlog. So that is the backlog as defined in the Royal Commission's recommendation when it referred to, it was 44,000, I'm not sure of the numbers afterward, it was 44,000 and something, claims that were not allocated and that needed to be allocated for processing before the end of March 2024.
Could you describe how, up until now, you have been kept abreast of the elimination efforts regarding the backlog?
I can. Weekly, at least weekly, with a verbal briefing from the team. Sometimes twice weekly verbal briefings, but at least weekly, and very significant written reporting as well between those briefings. And the minister has also had those verbal briefings and written reports every week.
Recommendation 2 included a call for the government and the DVA in the period leading up to March 2024 to implement corrective action if the elimination of the backlog wasn't on track. Was it necessary to implement corrective action?
It depends on how you define corrective action. I'm happy to define it as things that we did to ensure that the backlog was eliminated by March 2024. But if you were defining it as... No, no, I think I'll leave it at that.
I'm suggesting to you that the recommendation in this respect contemplated the possibility, without impugning integrity or anything, but contemplated the possibility that the efforts implemented from day one might not clear the backlog on time and that by late last year or some other time, you would, you collectively would recognise that you weren't on track to succeed and might have to do more or something different, a corrective action, to achieve the goal. Now, it may be that pretty much it followed a good trajectory and you landed the target as you saw it to be, or it may be that somewhere along the process you saw you were missing the target and you implemented a corrective strategy, and that's how you managed to land it. Which of those was it?
Certainly, over the time that we've been working towards that deadline, we have implemented different processes that you could define as corrective actions, but we have implemented different processes and approaches to ensure that we are on track to realise that deadline. So they are, to my mind, they are things like, obviously, the enhancement and expansion of the Claim Support Officer role. In addition to that, we sought some resources from Services Australia, some additional resources, some short-term resources to assist as well. There were ICT enhancements to my service that we set out very clearly to Services Australia would have to be implemented by a certain date, as agreed. Otherwise, we would have to instigate, you know, further actions to ensure that we remained on track for the backlog. So whether you categorise those initiatives as corrective actions or not, they were all efforts that were undertaken last year to ensure that we remained on track and could always see that pathway to realising the Royal Commission's deadline.
I want to come back to the definition of backlog in this context. Let me preface my question by acknowledging that you've had a significant change in arrangements in that previously, when the interim report came out, delegates did virtually all the processing. They'd get the raw material, they'd make the inquiries, they'd fill the gaps if they could, and then when the material was ready, they'd make a decision. But now you have introduced the role of Claim Support Officer. That person does a lot of the preliminary work and then tries to make the file ready for a delegate to consider. Firstly, however brief, was that accurate enough a description of a significant change you've made?
Yes, it is. Only, the only caveat I would add is that the Claim Support Officer role existed prior to my commencement as secretary, but it was smaller in scale, significantly smaller in scale and slightly different in focus, but there was some role that existed in that regard.
And was that role introduced after the interim report?
I would need to confirm that.
All right. The Claim Support Officers are not decision-makers in the process, only the delegates have that authority, correct?
That's right.
The interim report specifically referred to clearing the backlog of, quote, "claims waiting to be allocated to a decision-maker," unquote. Because there is now this significant and expanded role for CSOs, insofar as the claims backlog was cleared in recent weeks, it has been cleared in the sense that matters have been allocated to CSOs as well as delegates, correct?
That is correct.
If you strictly applied the definition in the interim report of matters, matters in the backlog if it hasn't got to a delegate, has the backlog been cleared as of today?
It's a definitional matter, again, as per our earlier discussion. According to the strictest definition, you could argue no. But I would contend that, and this is the, would be the experience of veterans and advocates, that with allocation to a CSO, there is movement and activity on that claim, and there are things happening that are leading to its faster presentation to a decision-maker.
During February this year, was there a significant increase in the average number of claims allocated to each delegate?
From what timeframe, sorry?
In February.
Just this...
February 2024.
I would need to check the numbers on that. What I would say is that there have been an increase in the number of cases allocated to delegates, or claims rather, but it is lower than the productivity increase that delegates, individual delegates, have been realising over the past few months in line with the faster decision-making that's enabled by claims arriving on their virtual desktop being investigation-ready. So the productivity increase per delegate is over 26%, and any increase in their caseload is significantly less than that.
All right, and this may be a bit tedious, but I'm just going to ask some repetitive questions. Insofar as there has been an increase in the average number of claims allocated to each delegate, do you know when that increase occurred, even if you don't know the figures?
I would need to check for you, but it would be late last year, when, which was when the Claim Support Officer model and the numbers in terms of the additional hundreds of Claim Support Officers really started to make that impact and to get those claims investigation-ready, as you said, and ready for determination by a delegate. And it is intuitive that where a delegate doesn't have to make those phone calls to set up medical appointments, to chase down things with a veteran or an advocate to enable determination of a claim, you would expect, and that is what we've seen, that delegates are able to make more decisions because those claims are arriving investigation-ready for them to apply their technical expertise to a decision.
Yes, and so far as, to the best of your knowledge, there hasn't been a significant increase in the number of claims per delegate this year?
I would need to confirm that. As I've said, I can definitely confirm that it hasn't exceeded, not even close, the productivity increase, the number of claims they're able to make, but I would need to check the exact numbers.
Let me just go to the Claim Support Officers, who are in a different category. Have there, has there been a significant increase in the average number of claims allocated to Claim Support Officers this year?
I don't know. I will need to confirm that.
And I'll, so you can do it later, but I repeat that question about late last year.
I will need to talk to the expert to make sure that I'm getting you the exact right answer, but it is the case that Claim Support Officers would have had an increase in caseload, obviously from the point at which the role was instigated. You know, it was very small in scale, they didn't have a caseload, so they each commenced with an approximate caseload of about 100 claims that they were following up on different aspects of those claims. And when we eliminated or were allocated, rather, the initial liability allocation backlog was addressed late last year, then that would have led to the shifting of more Claim Support Officers from initial liability onto a permanent impairment, which would mean, again, you would have seen that same pattern of an increase in permanent impairment claims on their caseload as they then assumed a caseload of permanent impairment claims. So there would be instances where caseloads have gone up, but it's in line with the shift in focus from initial liability to permanent impairment. And initially, it reflected the creation, or the expansion rather, of the role. So I can get you more nuanced and technically accurate information in that regard.
Thank you. Finally, on this little bit, insofar, accepting that it is understandable why you use clearing the backlog to refer now to allocating to a Claim Support Officer or a delegate if it goes directly to a delegate. Have you used that clearing of the backlog to, sorry, have you used allocating to anybody else as proof of clearing the backlog?
No, no, it's only a Claim Support Officer or a delegate.
And when we speak of delegates in this particular context, does it count if some claim was allocated to a team leader, director or assistant director?
Does it count as allocated?
Yes, we understand that those people technically have delegations, but that their role does not ordinarily include actually dealing with claims. If a matter were allocated to one of those managerial positions and the person wasn't actually dealing with the claim, would, in a substantive way like the CSOs and the delegates do, would it count as having been allocated?
I would need to check on that. I'm not aware whether, if that indeed has occurred, but I would check on that.
Insofar as the backlog figures may be different, if one applied the strict definition in the interim report, have those figures been kept?
I don't. I actually don't know. I would need to check. Our system now is oriented around claims initially, unless they're investigation-ready from arrival and don't need anything. That's obviously some claims in that category. Some are made under automated decision-making practices and rules. So there are a few different categories there, but apart from those categories, my understanding is that claims are allocated to a Claim Support Officer and then move into the investigation-ready queue for, to be picked up by a delegate.
Thank you. That's a convenient break in... That's a convenient break in topics and it's about two hours in.
Thank you, Mr Singleton. We'll just break for 15 minutes then, we'll adjourn.
All rise. The Royal Commission into Defence and Veterans Suicide is now adjourned. Royal Commission into Defence and Veterans Suicide is now resumed. Please be seated.
Thank you, Mr Singleton.
Thank you, Commissioners. Ms Frame, when does the department estimate that it will routinely be meeting all of the legislated guidelines for time taken to process claims?
We are currently modelling that with the demand-driven funding model. That was also a recommendation of the Royal Commission. We have not finalised that at the moment and there are still some things that are subject to change. Obviously, some other further ICT enhancements and other process improvements that should continue, will continue to impact the timeframe and the projected timeframe for that. But what I can say is, we anticipate it's... We will need the elevated resourcing that we have for some time yet in order to enable the backlog of claims not determined to be addressed.
On that, the department is due to lose about 500 temporary claims processing staff on the 30th of June. Will it be able to continue reducing the number of claims on hand if they don't continue working for the DVA?
As I said, we're working all the numbers of claims that we have on hand and also the increasing number of claims coming in as well into the demand-driven funding model and engaged in very active discussions with our colleagues in the Department of Finance about what resourcing we would need in order to address the claims determination backlog.
Your best estimate is you will need to retain at least some of those staff beyond the cut-off date of 30 June?
Yes, definitely.
Has the department undertaken all the work required of it to obtain a decision to grant those resources or has it got more work to do?
I think we have all the inputs to that work. I think we have all the inputs to that work. It's just the ongoing work of discussion and ultimately agreement about what resourcing level might be supported. I would point out that's not to be confused with the 500 additional ongoing staff that are separate to that number.
So let's just, for clarity's sake, note this, and I'll put the figures that I recall, and you can tell me whether they're right, wrong, or do your best. The 2020-2021 period, an additional 447 staff, many but not all dedicated claims processing were granted on a temporary basis ending this year.
That's right.
The following, maybe it was two years later, an additional 90 or 92 or thereabouts staff were granted to end on the 30th of June this year as well. But more recently, the current government granted 500 additional staff on top of the ones I've just mentioned, and they are on an indefinite or ongoing basis.
That's correct.
Is the modelling or study that's being done to work out just how many need to continue, who will otherwise cease working on the 30th of June, is that an input into the budget process?
Yes, it is.
Is it behind schedule compared with the ordinary budget processes?
No, the current budget is still under... It's been progressed and worked through at the moment as per normal budget timelines.
Has the Department formulated a plan to cover the possibility that the staff are not extended?
Not to my knowledge, because, as I said, the demand-driven funding model work is still being ultimately finalised and agreed. But what we do know, and what any veteran waiting on their claim to be determined would know, is that we still need an elevated level of resourcing in order to determine those claims as quickly as possible, and that's what we're seeking to achieve.
You understand that a government has many financial pressures, and not every proposal for resources will be accepted in the budget process. Given that, there is at least a chance, is there not, that you won't get the funding you need to keep any of these temporary staff longer than currently designated?
I couldn't... As I said, it's not finalised at the moment. I wouldn't offer a view about the outcome of the process, other than to say that with the claims determination backlog, where it is at the moment, and also the demand that follows in downstream programmes that's correlated with increased number of claims being accepted, which we've seen an enormous amount of claims activity in the last 12 months, that means there are pressures across the whole department. So the pressures on resourcing are not just in that claims group, but also in downstream services. So we are obviously making our strongest cases for what that precise level of resourcing might be in order to enable the Department to perform its work as expeditiously as it can.
We haven't got time to get into it, and many of my beautiful questions won't be asked this afternoon for timing reasons. But just quickly on that point, the downstream pressures or issues you've mentioned include things such as the following, do they not? With more claims now being granted because of the efforts to clear the backlog, now there are claims for specific treatments that the treatments team has to approve or at least consider, and there are other downstream consequences. Is that right?
That's right.
I want to turn to the Transition Medical Assessment Project, or TMAP. That's been going on since the 4th of April 2022. Is it due to finish in December this year?
At the moment, yes.
Is there some contemplation that it might be extended?
It's certainly something we would wish to extend.
Is that because it's proving useful, or because the results are uncertain and you need to do more to find out whether it's a success?
No, because it's proving useful. And we would hope not just to extend the timeframe, but also to extend the scope of the support that we're able to provide through that programme for medically transitioning service personnel who have really complex claims and need that support. What we are actively working on is how might we do that in the best way. Some of the changes to the model that will assist with that, the change from the use of occupational physicians to the use of general practitioners. And we've ascertained thus far that the same outcomes can be achieved with GPs. So we're actively looking at what can we do to make the model as scalable as possible in that respect.
Now, I'm not in pedantic mode at the moment, but what you say suggests that perhaps it should cease being a pilot project and become a part of business as usual. Is that in contemplation?
I think that's certainly something in contemplation. That's what I've seen the Department do with quite a few initiatives over the last few years, where they've found a way, whether through budget funding or not, to build it into the Department's foundational approach.
With apologies for perhaps covering a bit of territory you've just covered, but is it an aim of the TMAP to support certain transitioning ADF members with the help of a clinical team to support them, to help veterans access... I'll start that again. Is it an aim of the TMAP to support certain transitioning ADF members with a clinical team which has access to that member's ADF service and medical records?
That's right.
And is it a focus of the team that is doing the assisting, to assemble all the evidence needed, or some of it, to support a claim for acceptance of initial liability?
That's right, and the objective is to achieve that before the member leaves the ADF.
And I think it's clear from what you've said, this is helping veterans. Would that be right?
Helping serving men and women.
Yes, widely, yes, helping to... Yes, I accept that.
Soon-to-be veterans.
Is it also helping the delegates' work go more smoothly?
I would need to check on that aspect, but my understanding, based on what I've been informed and read about the pilot, is yes. Because of that close connection between defence clinical staff and DVA staff, for those complex claims, it is helping and making the delegates' task easier.
One of the measured results of the TMAP has been that for a selection of 14 conditions, the time taken for decision-makers to make initial liability determinations has always been less for TMAP cases, and sometimes dramatically so. Is that right, to your understanding?
I'm not sure about the exact reduction, but yes, that the time taken is less.
Although all of the selected conditions did see improvements, the figures show that it was especially so, especially improved, for physical injuries. And the response to one of our statutory notices told us, "The majority of TMAP participants submitting a claim that included a mental health condition were required to obtain a psychiatrist's report, which could lead to delays in determination of their claim." Would there be significant advantages if a reformed separation medical examination included all indicated psychological and psychiatric assessments and reporting, rather than leaving it to the processing stage?
Potentially. It's something I'd want to seek further information from our Chief Health Officer on, but potentially.
Is there any reason in principle or practice that you can think of why such a clinical team as being used in TMAP could not also at the same time assist members to gather and submit evidence they need for incapacity and permanent impairment claims?
I can't immediately think of reasons. Again, I would seek to consult with the CHO in DVA and other experts and that to see if there's anything I'm unaware of. But as with anything, TMAP started with that, you know, the piloting approach with an initial scope. And once something is tested and demonstrated to be of benefit, then the challenge is to look at where it might be applied more broadly and scaled up, as I've said. So it could certainly contemplate permanent impairment incapacity.
Last week, Ms Cole told us that it would be useful to the DVA if the ADF's medical separation examination were conducted by people who were trained with knowledge of the DVA-administered systems, including the SOPs, and produced reports designed to meet the needs of delegates in their work. If an arrangement along those lines, or the lines of the TMAP pilot, were adopted on a permanent basis, would it not also be useful if the veterans could later on, when they needed to get updated medical evidence, go back to the same medical team, even if some of the staff have changed, in order to get that additional evidence?
Potentially. I mean, certainly, I'd expect it would be useful to be able to access the report. And as you said, the professionals might have changed, but to be able to use the report.
There appear to be some similarities between the TMAP concept and the idea of beefing up the separation medical exam to cover a broader range of needs, particularly DVA needs. Has any contemplation been given to try and bring these two things to be considered together as part of one attempt to reform?
I'm not aware if that specific combination is being contemplated. It may be. I'm not aware. But what I am aware of is that, along with TMAP, there are also other initiatives that are embedded in DVA practice around a team supporting medical transitions and attendance, more urgent attention to IL claims associated with medical transitions and other enhanced VSOs. For example, we have VSOs working from hubs now in Nowra and Perth, working with veterans with more complex claims, which is effectively halfway between TMAP intensity and a standard claims officer level of support, or standard VSO level of support as well. So what I'm saying is, there are a number of different arrangements on foot that are all recognising that support and work prior to someone transitioning needs to be calibrated according to the need and complexity. And I think there's any number of combinations there, and things we can draw on, to contemplate what's the best way to expand the scope of that service offer and make sure that something is being consistently offered to all members transitioning across the country.
Does the Department consider that it is appropriate for a delegate who's processing a claim to request further medical assessments and reports for the purpose of checking whether or not the existing medical evidence is correct?
I would really like to defer to experts on that question. What I would say I am aware of is that delegates only seek additional medical information where there is an inconsistency in something provided already. It might be a different diagnosis, or it might be... It could be any number of instances of that. But also where they consider that updated medical information might be beneficial for a claim. For example, a condition that might have deteriorated further and the medical report was, you know, not current. If they consider that there could be a benefit there to the veteran, then they may request additional medical information. But it is not practice to require additional medical information if that has already been provided. And as you know, clinical advisers also exist to provide support to delegates in making those decisions.
What measures, if any, are in place to ensure that delegates comply with the policy in this regard?
There would be quality assurance from their team leaders and, you know, conferences, discussions around cases and examination of practices. We obviously respond to complaints. If we're alerted to anything, we would have a look at that, and there are, you know, standard, as I said, QA processes. Ms Cole and others who work in that team would be able to provide you more detail about the standard arrangements.
Now, that's the operator to display a document. It's tender list 13, which is DVS 0012 001 2586. The document is an early page of the S Statement of Principles concerning osteoarthritis. Just seem to have missed its cover page, but what I'll do is ask the operator to go scroll down a few pages to DVS 0012 001 2588. And I'm not going to get highly technical here, Ms Frame. I just want to introduce a topic by giving an example of how this works. Let us just, to give a little context, assume that a claim has been made for lower limb osteoporosis, and there is a diagnosis that that condition is suffered by the claimant. An issue arises then as to whether the condition can be connected to the service of the claimant. This particular one is the balance of probability ones, but there's another one for the other standard. And Section 9 of the instrument has a list of factors, one of which must exist before it can be said on the balance of probabilities that the condition is connected with the circumstances of a person's relevant service. And the numbering begins, it goes on to about 40 odd. I'll just ask the operator to go to the next page. And at the bottom, it's 14. This is for osteoarthritis of the lower limb only. And there's a number of possibilities, A, B, C, D, or E. And I'm just going to look at D. Ascending or descending at least 150 stairs, or rungs of a ladder per day, on more days than not, for a continuous period of at least five years, within the 25 years before the clinical onset of the osteoarthritis in that joint. And there are other ones for lifting, and there is a variety. And if we go on through to document page 2594, we get to the end of the list, which is 47. And then there's the relationship to Service Clause 10. "The existence in a person of any factor referred to in Section 9 must be related to the relevant service rendered by the person." So it's not enough that the person just happened to walk up and down a lot of stairs. They have to be military stairs, if I can put it that way. I know this is a long question, but I just want to give you a little context. I'm going to ask the operator to bring up another document now, tender list J. It's EXP 001... Sorry, 0010 0006 00036. This is a document prepared by Bond University. It's a study into practical aspects of what was happening in certain parts of military service, for the purpose of correlating them or discorrelating them with this SOP I read out. I'll ask a question now. Have you seen this document from Bond University?
I'm aware of the work they've been doing for some years now for DVA. We've submitted 68,000 documents to the Royal Commission, so this is one of them. I'm happy to look at whatever pages you might like me to consider.
We'll go to a couple if necessary, because I've really just got one big question here. I want to suggest to you that the legislation provides that the Repatriation Medical Authority could prepare SOPs in a different way from the way it is doing. Or if I'm wrong about that, that the Parliament could amend the legislation to allow it to do so. The ultimate question at the end of this is going to be, do you think it'll make it easier for delegates to process claims more quickly and more accurately? What I suggest the legislative scheme allows is for the RMA to come up with a list of factors, that if you can just prove that factor, it will be inferred that your diagnosed injury is referable to service without the veteran having to prove an individual case specific to his or own circumstances. Do you, does that make sense to you in terms of, am I too garbled? Or do you grasp that concept?
I do. And DVA do that now in many respects with a type of service being linked to a straight-through processing claim and the recognition that it would lead to those conditions.
Yes. What I want to suggest is that at the moment, for many claims, a veteran has to fill out load tables or step tables or other tables requiring quite detailed data from years ago to try and meet the requirements like the ones I read out from the SOP about steps. And that it's unrealistic to expect a veteran accurately to remember 10 years back, how many steps per day, for how many days per week. Do you agree that it would be difficult for some veterans to accurately calculate the number of steps they were walking every day or every week? Or how much they may have been carrying years and years ago?
I do. I think there'd be circumstances where, for example, people who served in the Navy would know very, would know how many ladders they climbed every day on average, or that, you know, the extent of that. So there would be different circumstances for service types. But that's what's also recognized, as I understand it, in this work that Bond University have been doing for some time, is continuing to add to the evidence and the conditions in which we can assume that direct connection and that that is then applied to DVA's straight-through processing.
Yes. So, and we're coming, I think you can see where we're going, but let's just take that example about the Navy personnel. They might well be able to cast their mind back to a particular ship and on which they sailed 15 years ago and remember the basic layout and remember that from their quarters to the deck, there was a particular ladder or steep stairwell to mount. But they might not remember the exact number of stairs or steps in that ladder. Do you agree?
That could well be the case.
And so it would be very difficult for them to give an accurate account in, say, 2025 as to how many steps per day. They might be out by a large number because they guessed the ladder steps out by one. Possible?
It's certainly possible. I can certainly say people would be required to cast their minds back a long time. But as I said, the work that you referenced from Bond University is trying to expand the scope of service type and the recognition of service type and its causal link to a condition. And I was also point out that acknowledging those practical challenges, that the rate of acceptance of conditions under this SOP and indeed most, all of the SOPs is very high. So, which is great, you know, that's something that we're pleased to see. But the rate of acceptance of conditions under this SOP is, I think, over 96%. So clearly the SOP is working in terms of finding ways and setting out how delegates are able to accept conditions in a really significant proportion.
Research like Bond University's research includes, does it not, research is actually going on base or to a particular location and watching how many steps, how much is being lifted and so on in daily life, correct?
Yes.
And with that information, it would be possible, or should be possible, I suggest, for a veteran when making a claim a long time later to say, look, I was in a particular category of service at a particular location, whatever the detail may be. And the department could then just say, well, the service record confirms that. We have a study from Bond University or somebody else that says for anybody doing that work, the likelihood is they have done a certain amount of stepping or lifting, whatever the case may be. Do you see that that approach could be taken so that the veteran wouldn't have to go and calculate how many steps he or she actually took, but could rely on standardized evidence of the type Bond is creating?
I see that that approach could be taken and is being taken.
Right. It's not being taken, I suggest, I mean, as preface, you don't control the RMA. You have to work according to the rules it puts out, correct?
Yes, that the RMA determine the SOPs, they make the SOPs.
One approach would be to take Bond University type evidence and instead of putting in clauses into a into a SOP about, you know, a certain number of steps per day per year, just have a matrix of service categories and dates. And if you just meet those, you don't have to meet the steps or the load tables. That would be one approach. Would you see the logic of that?
Yes, and there would be, I mean, there would be a context required there or consideration of which ones that, which conditions were most suited to that. But that, as I understand it, is the work that Bond University's been doing and that has enabled us in DVA to add to the straight-through processing number of conditions.
Yeah, so it hasn't happened with this SOP, but are you saying you're doing it at the delegate level? The delegate is just accepting the evidence of the Bond University type research and just comparing it with the service record and inferring the correct number or the necessary number of steps and loads and so on?
No, not as I understand it, because the delegates have to make their decisions under Merka. You know, obviously under Merka with regard to the SOPs, not specifically under DIRKA.
Yes, this is Merka.
This is Merka. Okay, so, no, the delegates have to have regard to the SOPs there. So I will need to take it on notice to bring you more specifics about how the straight-through processing work aligns with the work of the, and Bond University aligns with the RMA's work on the SOPs.
What I want to suggest is that whether it's done by amending the SOPs or it's done by having certain rules of evidence applied by delegates, it would be a much easier way for veterans to mount a claim or make a claim and a much easier way for delegates to make good objective rulings if instead of having to fill out load tables and step tables and make guesses as to how much they walked or carried, the delegates by whatever means could just compare Bond-type results with the person's service record?
It may be, Mr Singleton, that could be what they do. I would need to check on what they do to make sure you're getting the most accurate information. But I definitely can see that's a simpler way to do it. That's what I understood the Bond University work is delivering, but I will need to confirm for you how that works. Maybe it it satisfies the conditions under the SOP when they have that service type. But it's very technical and I will need to come back to you on that.
Yes. Finally, on this, quite a lot of work goes into a Bond-type study. Do you have the resources to do enough of those studies or commission enough of those studies to cover more than just the straight-through processing? Or would you need more funding to really roll this concept out to most conditions?
I would need to confirm that. I'm certainly not aware that there's any that we have adequate funding to continue the work with Bond University at the moment. We are, it links quite closely to our approach to research and evaluation more broadly as well in the department, which we are wanting to expand further as well and take a more strategic approach. And it could be that work identified through the research and evaluation strategic partnership approach we want to take with research institutions could also inform this work and provide additional mechanisms where these kinds of connections could be established, research undertaken, that constantly enable the SOP, the SOP, the system of SOPs and the whole delegation system to be fast-tracked and to recognize direct service links, causal links related to type of service. So it's certainly our objective to continue to do that. I'm not aware of a resource limitation at the moment on that, but I'm happy to advise the commission if I think there's anything further we could do in that regard.
Without revealing any commercially sensitive information, let alone any commercial identities, could you give us an overview of the role you envisage for information technology and claims processing in future years?
We have a digital resilience roadmap that considers what further ICT enhancements we would like to be the subject of investment, obviously, in the Department of Veterans Affairs. For claims processing in particular, an ongoing challenge remains that there are different systems that need to connect in order to enable, you know, the final determination of a claim. So a lot of it is on one system, but there are also other systems that need to be accessed. And even the system that supports all our training products could be improved. So there, we are considering what are the best investments to make to continue to improve that system. And the ultimate measure that we would be subjecting any request for investment to the government would be how is that going to improve the system and make the system more faster and more effective for veterans who are at the receiving end of that service? So that would be our overwhelming criteria in terms of the ICT investment that we seek from government. But we're contemplating a range of initiatives then that would further that. And there are some aspects of even artificial intelligence, which we're not using at the moment. But there are things that are available in that in that suite of products. It's obviously evolving very, very quickly that could help with quite basic menial tasks in claims processing like document sorting, for example. So we're always looking at what we can do to improve the way the system works, but we do use automated decision-making, as I said, at the moment, but only for acceptance of claims. But we're looking at what we can do to expand the scope of those systems and always with the objective of making claims processing easier and faster. But that would be the subject of consultation. First, government requests for funding and certainly consultation with the veteran community and affected community.
Is it in contemplation that the software you might eventually develop or commission will be able in effect to understand service records, understand medical records, and at least arrange them and summarize them so that delegates can digest them quickly?
There would obviously be benefits in something like that. We would be very keen to ensure that the veteran community were comfortable with whatever kinds of system approach we used in that regard. But yes, there would be benefits and we would be keen to demonstrate that.
And those sorts of developments are ones that are not dependent specifically on legislation that's yet to be enacted. They arise from the nature of medical life, service life and so on. And could they therefore, some work could begin soon to develop that?
Yes, there would be aspects of that that would not be contingent on legislative change.
And even when the software has to turn to the actual legislative rules, it would have to be designed in order to cater for the fact that legislation does change from time to time. So even work on legislative, on the computer program required to cope with legislation could begin soon, at least at the conceptual design level.
Yes.
I want to turn to the provisional access to medical treatment or PAMPT. Do you say PAMPT?
PAMPT, yes.
I'll try. It's the name of a program pursuant to which veterans are able at the department's expense to obtain medical treatment for 20 commonly accepted conditions even before their claims regarding those conditions have been determined. Is that right?
Yes, that's right.
If the claim is later rejected, do they have to repay the costs of the treatment obtained in the provisional period?
Not as I understand it, no.
One logical justification for that approach is that the veteran would have been entitled to Medicare coverage anyway. So the cost is a marginal cost. It's not the cost of the entire treatment. Wouldn't that be right?
I agree, Mr Singleton. I don't think the Department of Finance have the same interpretation, but I agree.
We're here to ask helpful questions. The department has told the commission that funding for the PAMPT program for the two years ending this June amounts to $33.6 million. Does the department know how much of this was therefore saved from what I'll call the Medicare budget?
I don't know that.
Does the department know how much of this amount was really just an early transfer of funds because the claims were later approved anyway?
I don't know that number offhand, but we know that it would be a significant proportion is essentially just to bring forward because of the acceptance rates for those claims. So yes, it would be very high.
To the extent that there is nonetheless some real cost in having this program, is that cost met out of the departmental fund or the administered fund?
The administered fund.
Presumably, the DVA is satisfied, and I'm not suggesting otherwise, but presumably the department is satisfied that expenditure out of that fund is permissible? Or it wouldn't be doing it?
Yes, that's right.
Does the PAMPT program also send the government and or the DVA a price signal that at least in theory should encourage the application of resources into claims processing? Because the longer you don't process a claim, the more money's going out the door to to a veteran who might have her claim rejected.
I don't believe so.
You don't think it encourages resourcing to be, I'm suggesting that when there's a program that says we're paying until the claim is determined from a finance department point of view, doesn't that encourage quick determinations?
I'm not aware of that, no. I don't think so. Because, and also, as you say, even though finance rules in any government I've worked in don't contemplate what's called a second order effect, which is the avoided Medicare expenditure. I don't, I'm not aware of any approach like that being brought to bear on the expenditure.
Is there any reason why PAMPT shouldn't apply to all conditions?
I wasn't in the department at the time it was developed. It was developed at a time when, as we've discussed earlier today, there was a significant backlog in waiting for a determination of initial liability. So clearly, the decision was taken to focus on the top 20 conditions and ensure that people had what is effectively non-liability healthcare cover for those conditions and that they were not disadvantaged in access to treatment while they were waiting for that initial liability to be determined. So I don't know whether at the time there was contemplation of all conditions or why the decision was made for the 20 most common, but I would suspect also that that's a very high proportion of claims, but I would need to confirm that myself.
Accepting fully that if one is going to limit it to a selection of a few claims, one would pick the top 20. But I suggest to you that there is no reason in logic or principle or practice why the program should not be applied to all conditions. Can you see a reason why it shouldn't be applied to all conditions?
It would need to be done in the context of a quite significant change in the approach to initial liability. And indeed, moving away from initial liability in that you're essentially extending non-liability healthcare. I'm not making a comment as to, you know, obviously that's helpful. But it would need to be approached as part of a a more significant shift in the way the current compensation system is arrayed. And And I believe in the, in a voluntary submission DVA made to the commission just before Christmas, we did suggest that there was scope to consider those kinds of changes, particularly now that we're moving, you know, we have a plan to move to one act as well. One aspect of the new act that's worth, of the proposed new act that's currently under, out for consultation, that is very relevant to your line of questioning here and your inquiries, is that there exists in the Merka the scope to have presumptive liability for conditions, which effectively achieves that same outcome as well. And in, in the move to that consolidated act and going forward under a single Merka Act, there is the increased scope then, because of, you know, the simplified arrangements to take proposals to government, they would still need to be endorsed by government, but to add conditions, prescribe conditions to that presumptive liability category that exists within the Merka Act. So there are different ways to achieve the same objective is what I'm saying. There's P A M T itself for the top 20 conditions, there's non-liability healthcare, there's presumptive liability under the Merka Act, and they're all different, different ways of ensuring that there's earlier access to healthcare treatment and constitute a different approach to initial liability.
The acknowledgement previously given, but repeated that you can't fix everything in the first year or even two. The DVA has told us that it does not know how many ex-serving defence members have received treatment pursuant to the P A M T programme, and they do not know how many of those who have later had their claims rejected. Is that just a matter of the DVA's ICT systems being poor, or is there a more fundamental problem that such information's not available?
I don't know.
All right. The department's also told us that the cost of treatment delivered under the programme per annum since its introduction is unknown. That appears to be more than an ICT issue. Doesn't it indicate a basic, sorry, the basic principles of accountancy and tracking the flow of public money are not being followed?
I would need to look at the response there and, and understand more of, of the context in which that was provided, so I'm sorry, I can't comment further on that.
We won't do, we won't go in for a repeat of my earlier stumblings. Let me go to litigation and reviews. Does the DVA employ sufficient solicitors, and I mean number of solicitors, not whether the individuals are sufficient, to enable it to conduct its own cases in the AAT and the courts without retaining private solicitors?
My understanding is that we do have to retain private solicitors for some matters in the AAT, but again, I will, I will need to, I will confirm that.
And I'm not trying to box you, I'll just ask the question, it's not meant to be disrespectful of your need to confirm, just repeat that answer if need be, but has consideration been given to perhaps increasing the size of your legal branch so that its claims-related litigation is done in-house, at least at the solicitor level?
We would be very keen always to have more legal support in-house. We're subject to the same workforce shortages that all government departments in Canberra, and I'm sure in other jurisdictions are experiencing there as well. It is relevant to note that also with the legislative reform proposal that's currently out for consultation, it would reduce the need for those solicitors at all in that it takes out the pathway from DIRKA to the AAT, which is where those solicitors are employed and would have those same appeals going to the Veterans Review Board in line with the arrangements for Merka and VEA. So we're already on a trajectory where that will change quite significantly, but in the interim, yes, we, we certainly would, our preference would be for in-house lawyers wherever we're able to secure them.
The commission has heard about some advocates taking large payments or proportions of entitlements for their work. Is the DVA aware of this occurring?
I, I'm not sure about the proportion, but I'm certainly aware of the, that this is occurring in the sector, yes.
Does the DVA have any proper role in combating this problem?
I believe so.
What are you doing about it?
I think our role, we're currently working with an advocacy, a group of advocates and on a working group to look at improvements to the advocacy system. But one of the ways DVA, we don't provide advocates, as you know, but one of the ways DVA can assist here is ensuring that information is available to veterans as they are making claims, to inform them about the presence of advocates, availability of advocates in ex-service organisations who don't charge for their services. And that in New South Wales, there's the Veterans Legal Service where that can be, that can be provided through that facility. So our obligation is, I think, is to ensure that veterans are aware of that and that they make their choice then with adequate information about whether they indeed need to pay for an advocate or not. We're also piloting some different approaches or prototyping rather. In WA, we have some of our delegates, I think it's one or two, sitting in an ex-service organisation and assisting with claims. So that is something that, in, in the lodgment, not advice on what should be lodged, but rather that's what the advocate does, but assisting the advocate in the technical, in lodging the claim on the system. So freeing up the advocate to, to provide more advice, obviously. And that is something that the ESOs, if that's successful, we would be seeking to replicate that and to leverage more extensively the ESO network, then they are connected veterans' talk through those channels, through social media and through other ESO channels. So we are actively working to try and ensure that veterans are aware of what is available. Also looking at putting something on MyService that also alerts veterans to that when they lodge claims about the availability of, of advocacy services and where they might go for that.
The DVA has this year begun a pilot of including in the roles of some staff members, the role of assisting veterans and families to identify their potential entitlements and perhaps even help them to claim them. Can you tell us a bit about this pilot and what its scope is?
This, the one in Western Australia?
I don't have a note of where it is, it might, it might be. It was in paragraph 9.2 of the submission you made in December last year. I don't know whether you've memorised.
Did you just?
Let's see if we can find it.
Is it possible to read it out to me or, or bring it up, just to make sure I'm talking about the right thing?
I'll just read it out and I'm just gonna, this, this version hasn't got a number on the top, but in early 2024, "DVA will pilot approaches for DVA staff to support veterans and their families to lodge claims. This will involve claims lodgment assistance allocated at an early point in the engagement process to provide specific advice regarding the types of entitlements and supports veterans may be able to access, the information required for submission of a claim, as well as information about the process the veteran can expect." There is more, but just.
Okay, thank you, no, thank you. That's very helpful. So yes, that would be referring to the commencement in WA of delegates in, I think it's one or two, sitting in an ESO and assisting, as I said, with the lodgment of claims, but not providing advice about claims. We leave that to the advocates who are expert in that regard. Also, it could be referring, it also is inclusive of the enhanced VSOs, we're calling it, which is the Veteran Support Officers, who are sitting in hubs, in Defence Family Hubs in Nowra and Perth, and providing the services and advice that you just listed.
It's been suggested to us that over the last 30 years, perhaps beginning with the transfer of the rehabilitation hospitals to the states, the culture of the DVA has changed from being a significant healthcare provider to being more of an insurance company type model, and also from being a body that respected professionals, particularly medical professionals, to a body that doesn't. I wanted to give you a general opportunity to respond to those two points, if you wish.
I, I haven't had those raised with me before. They're new to me, those ones. What was the first one? The second one was not respecting medical professionals?
And the first is, is related. It's, it's moving from being a healthcare provider to an insurance company.
Right.
Just an opportunity, but I'll, I'll go to the next question. In respect of the arguably difficult challenge of measuring corporate culture, you get, among other things, no doubt, the results of the APS employee survey, DVA client satisfaction surveys, and you've also commissioned a report from Flinders University regarding whether or not the DVA has an adversarial culture. I want to ask you about the Flinders University study, but first, are there any other resources of this kind on which you are relying to get information about the culture of your organisation?
They're the most significant ones. And in line with what I said earlier, the other intelligence I would draw on to make those assessments is direct feedback from ex-service organisations and veterans themselves about their experience of that culture.
And to, and to be fair, you, at least metaphorically, you walk about the department and see some of this for yourself?
Yes.
What was the Flinders University project about?
It was actually instigated in, in direct response to questions from the Royal Commission that were put to us about how we could feel confident, or whether we were indeed confident that there wasn't an adversarial culture in the claims, in the Client Benefits Division in DVA. And I, I referenced the APS statistics, the census results, sorry, the APS census results that have that high figure of DVA staff who are committed to their work and have that purpose in their work. There were other surveys in DVA about, you know, the connection people feel to their work serving veterans in DVA. But I could see that whilst I felt confident that there wasn't an adversarial culture, that I didn't have anything current or specific that had been independently commissioned that could test that and, and prove or disprove that. So it was in response to the Royal Commission's questions about that, that I felt that was needed and that regardless of the result, I needed to know and have independent assessment of whether indeed there was an adversarial culture.
What was your approach to overseeing the project and in particular, what instructions or guidance, if any, did you give to the researchers before, during or after they did their work?
I actually didn't give any instructions to the researchers, so that would be other people in the organisation. I had an initial conversation with Professor Lorn. She was suggested to me as someone who had appropriate, this was in her academic area of expertise, knew I wanted it independently done outside of the department and I was, my preference was for a university department rather than a consulting firm. And also I was keen to find an organisation that had, was military aware, had some recognition of military service and veteran experience. So Professor Lorn was recommended to me. I phoned, I called her and asked her if she would be interested to undertake the work, and she indicated she would be. And at that point, it was further conversations then about the parameters of the research and the questions were developed between other DVA staff and Professor Lorn's team at Flinders.
I just, I'll go back into pedantic mode for a moment, but in terms of not giving instructions, who decided what the question for study would be?
Oh, yes, so sorry, no, that, that was my only explicit instruction when I spoke to Professor Lorn, that I wanted to test the proposition that there was an adversarial culture in the Client Benefits Division in DVA.
And after seeing the draft report, in effect, you reiterated that that was the question to be asked, and for reasons of transparency, you recorded your communication in writing?
Yes.
What different instructions or guidance did you give to DVA staff in respect of the study?
Nothing specific, other than that that was what we were wanting to test, that we were using the Health and Wellbeing Survey that's annually conducted amongst DVA staff to include these questions, and that they would be questions, I, I imagine they were jointly devised between DVA and Flinders, but you would need to speak to people who are in those discussions about whether they were developed by Flinders and commented on by DVA or, or vice versa. But the questions were certainly developed in, in collaboration with Open Door, and I think we had over two and a half thousand responses to the questions in the department.
It's been suggested that, at least these days, a problem to be tackled is not so much that staff members feel adversarial towards veterans, but that many staff feel that the DVA systems and a variety of problems like caseloads and siloing are unavoidably, although unnecessarily, making veterans' engagement with the DVA claims process seem adversarial in its effect. Firstly, do you agree that that's an emerging analysis?
I, I, it's only been presented to me today, but I can see how the lack of coordination of our systems, when it manifests in needing to re-ask for information, for example, or also it's exacerbated at the moment by delays people have experienced and are still experiencing in getting a determination of their claim, even though those numbers are increasing significantly, there's still, as I've said, a backlog in determinations there. But I can see how those, that, that might make a veteran feel that that was an adversarial approach, that they were being challenged, when in fact, I, I think you're alluding to there, the underlying cause may be the inadequacy of the system, that it doesn't show records of things that a veteran might consider would ordinarily be there.
The Royal Commission has been examining the possibility of introducing a veteran identifier on an, which could well be on an opt-in basis, which could serve both the purpose of facilitating access to various services and the purpose of getting better data on veterans' needs. It's been pointed out that the idea of adding an identifier to the Medicare card has its problems, and also that virtually all veterans are entitled to a white card. Do you see any technical or other difficulties in adapting the white card for use in various ways beyond its current, so that in effect it becomes a veteran identifier to get access to state government concessions and, and other benefits?
I could, I could see, it certainly could be used in that regard.
It would be technologically possible for the, for the white cards to have a computer chip that enabled cards, again, on an opt-in basis to be used for such a thing as getting a state government concession of some kind. Do you see any barriers to such a move?
There are practical barriers at the moment about the ability of systems between governments, you know, to recognise information, as well as legislative barriers around information sharing itself. So they would all need to be considered, and as you said, when, when something was identified in that way, when it was a card tied to an individual, use would need to be on an opt-in basis.
Has the DVA been involved in any studies or consultations with state governments or, or other bodies about designing a veteran identifier of any kind?
There have been discussions at the Veterans Ministerial Council. I don't think about a national veteran identifier, but about more consistent approach to concessions and benefits for veterans, and that, that does go to then, whether there was some ubiquitous card or identifier, whatever it might be, that enabled that. But that's not where the conversations start, as I've witnessed them, they start with that, that objective of achieving a consistent service offer and making access to benefits more, you know, more seamless and easy, more easily connected between jurisdictions, between commonwealths and state jurisdictions, and between state and territory jurisdictions themselves.
Thank you for coming again and testifying. Commissioners, those are my questions for today.
Thank you, Mr Singleton. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Secretary. I, I just wondered if you are able to tell me, and you may not know, but do you know, have any sense of what proportion of DVA DVA claims are actually made by service members who are transitioning, kind of at the point of transition or shortly thereafter, as opposed to claims that come later in life? Is there a balance of how many? I'd like to understand how many could actually be dealt with upfront versus how many emerge over time and would come later?
I don't have that exact breakdown, Commissioner, today. What I do know, I would expect that many claims emanate later in life and are not known at the time of transition. But particularly for those medical transitions, which are about 30% of the number any year, our intention, as I've said, is to enable finalisation of those initial liability claims as people leave, and that would be where the most significant proportion would be because of the nature of the transition there. But I'm certainly happy to get more numbers.
Yeah, I'd be interested to know the breakdown. Moving on, you talked about the role of the Joint Transition Oversight Panel. One of the issues that has been raised with this commission, but which unfortunately we have not had an opportunity to explore at any depth, is the issue around superannuation payments and taxation implications. So my question is, is the ATO on that panel?
They're not on the Joint Transition Oversight Panel because that's CSCR, as I said, Commonwealth Superannuation Corporation, not the ATO. We do, there is a group at the moment, a working group in DVA across the ATO, DVA and CSC and Defence. I think Defence are involved, definitely the other three. Just discussing that issue. I would note, again, in the voluntary submission we made before Christmas, we did signal that that would be something to look at in the future. And indeed, has been a recommendation in the past from Andrew Podger, I think, recommended that there was potential to look at amalgamating Merker and Durkha incapacity payments with invalidity payments under military superannuation systems, and that there could be benefits in taking that approach.
I'm pleased to hear that that work is ongoing in terms of looking at it. Can I just ask again, what might seem like a really dumb question, but I'll ask it anyway. You said that DVA can only support treatments and interventions where it meets a certain standard of evidence, but that you can fund ESOs who might be able to provide interventions that don't meet the standard, the same threshold in terms of the standard of evidence. I'm just wondering, what's the, on what basis is that distinction drawn? If you can fund it one way, but not the other way, why is that from a legislation point of view?
Because there's more flexibility in grants. When grants are made, they could be made for any purpose. There's veteran wellbeing grants, we've talked about grants for hubs, for establishment of veteran hubs. There's just, it's in effect a block grant, a sum of money that's transferred to an organisation for a purpose they've said they want to undertake. Whereas for DVA under outcome two, where we're talking about those services, they need to be specified under, and I will correct, I will come back and correct my, if anything I'm communicating is not correct, if people in DVA tell me I haven't got the nuancing right. But it has to be under the treatment principles and approved for that purpose.
That makes sense. Can I, just going to the discussion Mr Singleton had before the break in relation to the implementation of recommendations, whether they're implemented as worded or not. What I take from that and from your response is that sometimes governments might accept the kind of intent, as in the what, but sometimes the how might change. So in essence, they're slightly modifying the recommendation that they accept. But they may not communicate that quite so clearly. Do you think that there needs to be a greater transparency in relation to when government might accept the recommendation in a slightly modified form? For example, because the specified form, as I think you said, might not be feasible. But they can still implement the intent by modifying the action slightly.
I mean, it's open, I've seen that done in many occasions where a government will write, except in principle, and delineate how they're proposing to realise that. That may or may not be, it might vary slightly from a specific approach that's been recommended. But I certainly think that's open to any government to do.
Yep, okay, thank you. I just wanted to ask about mental health crisis support. We heard earlier today from a Bupa representative, and he was talking about arrangements that Defence has to purchase beds in mental health facilities, in private mental health facilities, for example. And one of the things we've heard repeatedly during this commission is about, you know, mental health needs and when they're urgent, and the difficulty people have in accessing the supports they need. And it's particularly challenging in the veteran space, I guess, because DVA is the funder, but not the provider, and is not actually sourcing the services per se. But there are, as I said, we've heard many accounts where people have struggled to actually get the support they need when they're in a mental health crisis. Has DVA got, you know, has DVA considered this, considered options that might address how you could better support people who are in a crisis? And generally speaking, there, it's probably fair to assume that they'd be quite vulnerable at that particular point in time. Is there more that can be done, I guess, is the essence of the question?
Obviously, we have open arms, so immediately I would refer to open arms as part of the DVA response, including to crisis. And there's a very fast pickup rate for those calls and demonstrably a very swift response from DVA to veterans calling in crisis. We do work, I know we work to source beds, as you've said, we don't provide them ourselves, it's not our hospital or our facility. But we do work to provide those and find them wherever we can and to look at alternatives as well. I know of DVA staff who really pull out all stops to try and find an option and work with any providers in the sector to do that.
Is that up to the initiative of an individual staff member, as opposed to there's a clear contact point for someone who's in crisis?
Well, the contact point would be open arms initially, or potentially coordinated client support if someone was already connected to DVA and that more intensive support. So the contact point would be either of those two. And the remit of those is definitely to do whatever we can to assist. So I don't think it's as discretionary in that respect. But I would need to check exactly on the processes there. We do look all the time as well for how we might do things differently and leverage what we have. So for example, in Tasmania, we're having very active conversations with the state government and mental health and their provision of mental health support services there, and how open arms can better support hospital admissions when people are admitted to hospital, how we can assist in discharge planning and rehab support at home, and just being a really active member of that support ecosystem. So it's something that we're always looking to improve and can always see where DVA might be able to assist. Open Arms is, you know, is a well-funded, military-aware mental health support service that we want to make sure is connected as best as it can be to support services across the country.
I think the challenge is, of course, open arms can't provide the care when someone needs a hospital admission. And we all know the challenge of getting access to an inpatient bed, inpatient mental health bed in particular, across the country. And, you know, I'm not sure that there's an easy solution. I'm just kind of curious to know whether DVA is aware of the issue and pursuing options. So it's good to hear what you're doing in Tasmania and what have you. I'll leave that question there. I just have one other question in relation to Mr Singleton's discussion around the testing of the perception of an adversarial culture in the department, and I accept the work you're doing with Professor Lorn. And I heard what you said about the satisfaction. I think you look at satisfaction from clients, you looked at the trust rates. But some of that is about possibly influenced by outcome rather than the process. Have you actually gone out and asked the veteran sector specifically that question around the culture, as opposed to those kind of proxy measures of satisfaction and trust?
There are a number of, you know, effectively client satisfaction surveys or client surveys that the department conducts. So, and we're attempting to consolidate them and make them more streamlined and valuable and strategic, I suppose, rather, I should say, in terms of the information they provide to the department and what they enable us to do then, to improve our services. So there have been surveys on that. Different veterans have different perspectives on that, obviously. And I've acknowledged in the past that there was, there's evidence of a different culture existing in at least parts of the department in the past. But I feel confident and even more assured with the recent survey results that it's not the prevailing culture in Client Benefits Group now.
Okay, I've got other questions, but I'll leave them there in the interest of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Douglas?
Thank you, Miss Frame, for your evidence. You were asked by Mr Singleton about, in effect, legal assistance for people making claims. I'm not sure whether we've spoken to you in the past about the model in Canada of the Bureau of Pension Advocates. Are you aware of it?
I'm aware of it.
Right. Curiously, from my point of view, it's a an independent legal body, but set up within their Department of Veterans Affairs to look after appellateants against decisions made within their Veterans Review System. But by all accounts, it operates and is perceived to operate independently. So it's been an interesting possibility as a means of assisting people who can't fund themselves to get legal advice. There's a submission that's been made to us by the National Legal Aid Bodies that they be funded nationally to provide not just advice about pensions and matters like that, but also more general advice about matters relevant to veterans generally. It's of the same nature as the New South Wales Legal Services Commission work that you referred to in your evidence. Are you aware of that submission?
I'm not aware of that submission, Commissioner, but-
I'm afraid, do you have a view about it?
I am aware that DVA made a submission to the National Legal Assistance Partnership Review. I think that was the name of the review. And DVA made a submission to that and did suggest that we felt there was value in the expansion of that approach taken in New South Wales nationally.
Thanks.
So DVA has expressed that view. I'd also just reiterate what I said earlier about the Veterans Review Board and the the expansion of that effectively under the proposed legislative approach that's out for consultation now, whereby all veterans would have that pathway of appeal. And the benefits of that model that we know to exist as it being, you know, it's a non-adversarial model without legal representation there in that appeal process. And provides an alternative dispute resolution approach that we consider has benefits for veterans.
Thank you.
Just to take that a step further, if I may, are you aware of the Cornell Report? And just very brief background, Mr Cornell, I think, has had many roles. He also led the DART II, the second iteration of the Defence Abuse Response Task Force. I think he led a delegation to Canada and he came back and made a recommendation in relation to that Canadian model. It's not one size fits all, there may be aspects of it that may not suit us, but I simply draw it to your attention. It certainly caught our attention and I need to make it clear that this commission has not reached any view or made any decision about what model we may recommend in relation to advocates. But the problems are clear and you've highlighted them yourself, and I know you're well aware of them. So we are looking, obviously, to look at that issue and see if we can make a recommendation. And it would be very helpful if we can get an indication from DVA down the track about what your thoughts are. If I just sort of tidy up a couple of other issues, if I may, I won't be too long. We talked about the peak body, if you like, for ESOs. And I have to say, it's positive and heartening that the groups have all come together. They appear to have reached consensus that things need to change. And I'm really heartened by the fact that DVA is funding the proposal to see if they can pull together a business case. Is it, I mean, it must be your view, obviously, that it cannot simply be a cut and paste from England or anywhere else. It has to take into account Australian conditions and the environment to see how that would work. Would you agree with that?
Yes, I would.
Okay. When did you envisage, I think you mentioned it's probably three or four months before that may sort of reach fruition where a business case is mounted?
That's what we're hoping, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make the point that it's really an important piece of work. And as you're aware, there were a number of forums that I think you attended and we attended with the various groups, but I think we're almost there. It's something that DVA must keep an eye on and continue to push and support. A couple of other issues, the census, you've mentioned, and we're obviously, I'm certainly out of date. The last we had heard from the Australian Bureau of Statistics is that the matter of whether the questions in relation to military service were to remain in the census or not was under consideration. But I just want to confirm, your understanding is that that has happened now, they confirmed?
My understanding is that the question about whether someone has served will remain in the 2026 census.
Thank you. One other issue, and this may be something, Miss Frame, that you may take on board and perhaps come back to us, unless you want to give me your thoughts today. One of the issues that we've come across, I've certainly come across a number of times, excuse me, in private sessions and elsewhere, is a certain amount of trauma that has been inflicted on people who may have served overseas in some capacity. And it was deemed not to have been warlike or, you know, basically a conflict zone. So they're denied any medallion recognition and perhaps some other benefits that would normally flow. And there's a couple of startling examples of people who served in the Lebanese civil war and then someone decided it wasn't actually a war. Is this something that the commemorations area of DVA may consider examining to see if they can add their voice or see if they can assist? It has certainly caused a lot of trauma in people that we've heard from. Some of them your clients, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Yeah. I'm not aware that it's something that commemorations would have the expertise to do. And I will need to seek more information myself, but I would envisage that those decisions are made outside of DVA. Quite possibly.
They are. It's actually the minister is the only person who can decide whether somewhere it was warlike or not.
So as I said, I don't think it's at the moment enunciated as something that our commemoration staff would do. But there is obviously some connection there between even official histories that the War Memorial instigate and other activities like that whereby those stories are actively sought, recounted and collated. That I imagine that that's obviously within the DVA portfolio where that input might inform some of the decisions in that regard. But I couldn't immediately say that commemorations would have a- But I couldn't immediately say that commemorations would have a, have a role.
Grateful if you can have a, just consider it. And if there are, is anything you can come back to us on, we'd be grateful to hear from you. Okay, thank you. Mr Bergen?
Thank you, Commissioner. I just have two questions for the secretary.
Certainly.
First is, what, if anything, she can tell the Royal Commission about the amount of claims that have been disposed of by determinations or decisions in the last financial year as opposed to the previous financial year?
Yes, thank you. We had a discussion about whether claims are with a delegate or a claim support officer. But I think it is helpful to note that with the addition of claim support officers to the process that we achieved last year, the number of decisions made by DVA is increasing all the time and, and really rapidly, such that the number of decisions made as at the end of January is just under 130,000 decisions since July 1, which is already at the level for the previous financial year. So there is clearly a lot of increased activity occurring. There is increased productivity of delegates. The time taken to process for Merka is coming down. And I apologise, I want to acknowledge for veterans who have been waiting a long time, they're still waiting. With that, those claims being allocated, 85% of those claims in that original backlog as designated by the Royal Commission have been determined, but there are still many other claims needing to be determined. So I just wanted to be able to assure the veteran community directly and commissioners that there is very much increased activity happening and decisions are being made at an increasing rate.
Finally, I just wanted to check with the secretary whether there was anything else she wanted to tell the commission that hasn't been covered by her evidence today.
I don't think there's anything further. Thank you.
Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Singleton, any issues you wish to raise?
One question arising out of Commissioner Brown's question about the distinction between grants and benefits paid out under legislation. Do the grants get paid out of the administered fund or the departmental fund?
Uh, departmental, as I understand it.
Thank you. Thank you for evidence. Might the witness, sorry?
I'm worried I, I've got that wrong, so I will need to check that. Actually, if I, I would appreciate if I could take that on notice. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Might the witness be excused?
Yes, thank you. Ms Frame, your, your excuse from your summons to appear today, but I do need to make this comment on behalf of my fellow commissioners and the commission. We can see you have momentum. You're certainly heading in the right direction, and obviously we'd, we'd wish you every success and urge you to continue heading in the direction you're heading in. You can't lose momentum. We appreciate all the changes that have gone into clearing the backlog, the legislation, the culture. All of these are crucial for veterans, and there has been movement in the last 12 months, and that's very heartening to see. So your excuse from your summons to appear today, and thank you again for appearing with us and for the preparation you've put into the evidence today.
Thank you.
Are there any other issues from anyone?
No, Commissioners.
I understand we're adjourning till 9am on Monday?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll adjourn then.
All rise. The Royal Commission into Defence and Veteran Suicide will adjourn to 9am Monday, the 18th of March.